Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, May 8th, 2006. This evening, City Council is going to be meeting in a series of committee meetings, beginning with Communication Committee and City Services, and Art and Recreation, Environment, Finance and Personnel, Transportation, and finally Planning and Development. First, Communication Committee Chair, Vujin Kavish.
Thank you. We had a small conversation with Council tonight on city communication. Most of it centered around the website, actually, and on the something on government channel. And also, there was an interesting suggestion about having a kiosk. First, it was thought to be kind of a physical poster-based kiosk, and then some discussion about having an electronic kiosk, which would have information about city services, events, concerts, et cetera. And there was some discussion about maybe generating some interest in having it joint with the university, since it would be, you know, in-town and accessible to both students and citizens. So that was one of the things that we were discussing. And another issue that came up was that the government channel has operating rules and procedures, and the website doesn't seem to have those at this time. And so there's some discussion about the fact that maybe we should develop, or jointly with Ron, who runs the website, some operating rules and procedures, some policies about who would, how decisions about information on the web would be made. So I believe that several people on Council are interested in working on that, and so we'll be developing some policies and procedures as we move forward. So that's the, and people who have concerns or interest in finding more information about the city, or find it hard to find, or are interested in different kinds of information, you know, this is an ongoing communication, and people who have concerns or interests, they, please feel free to contact me. Okay, thank you.
Any miscellaneous?
Yeah. I actually have mine from miscellaneous. Michael Jones from the Men's Water Polo Team, who did the beautification day a couple weeks ago, is here to give us a report. And you should all have the overview that was put into your boxes today, and he's just gonna give us an overview of how the project went.
Great.
Just give us your name and your address.
My name is Michael Jones. I live at 19 Curz, Hemm Street. First of all, being in a first annual, I thought it was a huge success. We had everyone show up, I guess, except like nine volunteers, which isn't bad at all. If you look at the handout I gave you, the first page discusses basically the overview of the day, all the stuff that was going on, how much food was given out, et cetera. The second page, which is really interesting to look at, is the project report. All nine of these projects were successful. One that was not so successful was graffiti in the parking garage. That stuff is pretty old, and so it was kind of difficult to get off. But the most successful one, we thought, was the West Elementary School. We did the entire area. It was very pretty when it was done. We applied 75 bags of mulch, and the principal is still thanking me today. Every other area, though, was pretty good. There was a bit of a situation with the HDL Center fired wall. Actually, it was free graffiti that night, and so even though we did try, somebody went ahead and put up their logo or their criticism towards something, but still, we tried. It was a noble effort. The last page is a couple statistics about it, just to, you know, oh wow, we passed out 1,000 beautification day pamphlets. You go down, we collected 48 bags of trash, which I think is pretty nice. 165 volunteers/workers in the day, and so it was pretty big. We got a lot of recognition, which is at the bottom as well. I have copies, which I did not give to Amy, I apologize, of the budget we used. There might not be enough, so we could always share. It's not a bad thing to share. But our budget was fairly large as far as sponsors. We did get a lot of sponsorship. We got 17 sponsors, both money and trade. Trading meaning like the Athens Messenger gave us free advertising, or like College Book Store gave us free bottled water, or Prover gave us a gift card. We had a lot of expenses, though, but in the end, we still have $600 in the account, and we're gonna push that on for next year, to make it even maybe bigger and hopefully better. We definitely set the trail. We made the trail for the next group that takes this on, because unfortunately, we can't, the Men's Water Polo Team cannot do this next year. We're graduating five of our top people on this project. We're also trying to aim to get to Nationals next year, so we're gonna work harder in the pool. I have set up meetings with two groups that might, one of them might take it on. Club Sports, the whole entire Club Sports program, might take this on. And because we still have a couple guys that worked on this project, they'll still be involved with the planning for next year to ensure it to be successful. Also, we're looking into AFIO, the fraternity, the service fraternity on campus, and we've already, they've already said, yeah, we might be able to take it on. So we plan on having planning meetings with them, a lot of meetings, before the end of the year to ensure this to be successful. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question, Michael. On the, first of all, let me say, you know, congratulations on the successful project, and look forward to doing it in upcoming years. My question is about the package that you guys put together, which, great, you know, I think a huge part of this was education. Where were those distributed? How did you guys distribute those packets of information?
Well, the sorority group was in charge of that, the WPA, and we distributed them to every student off-campus area. We didn't go all the way out to like Round Street, which is a bit of a walk, but we hit everyone, and we actually had leftovers, and we delivered them to the dormitories and some apartment complexes that we weren't able to get to. That was pretty successful, too, and even though we did have a small shortage, they all worked just a little bit longer just to get the rest of those out. If you do the math, that's like 29 packets for every volunteer that worked on that project, so it's really not that much work. It's just walking around and enjoying the day.
Right.
So, yeah. Any other questions?
You know, I don't think in 18 years or so that I've hung out in this room, I can remember another example of an organization, from OU, coming up with an idea like this, following through, and reaching out to the community and doing such a great job as what you guys did here. I think that's really phenomenal, and I do also want you to know that it was a topic of conversation when Dr. McDavid was at lunch with Council this past week. And as an example of what a great community/university relation-building-type event that this was, so kudos. Please, get back to all of your organization how wonderful all of us feel that this was, that you did.
I do have practice tonight, so I'll be sure to tell all of them there.
Yes.
A lot of people outside of the city of Athens, like my parents, my parents' friends, were all wondering how this was put together, and it wasn't the Men's Water Polo Team that just did this. It was also the City Council members, a lot of community members that put their time out, such as the Clean Group and neighborhood associations, also several OU individuals, such as Mark Vincent, and President McDavid helped us here and there. So if everyone can stick their hand in and help out, I think it'll be even bigger next year.
But the leadership that was started with Men's Water Polo Team, I think, is, you know, what is a great example here.
Thank you.
Yes. We applaud you.
I have one question. Do you think this would be more appropriate in the fall or the spring, in terms of doing this type of stuff? I mean, in terms of timing for any organization that takes it over?
Well, in the fall, a lot of organizations are just starting with their turnover of officers, and I think because it is more pretty in spring, and that's where a lot of the tour groups come around in the springtime for OU, I think it'll be more appropriate. Also, it was six months of planning, and to get it going right at the beginning of the year and to have it right away, that's a lot of work, a lot of push and shoving. I think this way it was easier, even though it was fairly stressful. It was easier to be able to take our time, week after week, have a goal set for that week, you know, we want this many sponsors, or collect this many tools, or talk to this many people. And it was, I think, more beneficial because it's Mom's Weekend, and it was right around Earth Day and Clean Week here in Athens. So it was a nice, nice touch for the end of the year. Thank you.
Any more from Communication Committee? Communications Committee is adjourned.
Welcome to City Services Committee, and Trina De La Torre.
I asked for this City Service Committee meeting to talk about a few things concerning Halloween. I would like to make some progress before the students go home for the summer, so they have some idea of what will be involved in Halloween this year. Since the beginning of this council term, I have brought up the topic at conversation with Council. A large number of people from the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee attended that particular meeting, plus some other people with various points of view. Following that, I went to the Athens City Department Heads and talked with them about what they felt was important. I've spoken with Mrs. McDavid, the wife of the president of OU, because she has been kind of assigned the task of Halloween considerations on behalf of the university. I brought up the topic, or actually Debbie brought up the topic, at our conversation with President McDavid at lunch on Tuesday, and have talked to various community members and leaders. The summary, the grand picture that I've gotten from that is that many people feel that it might be a time that we want to add activities to what's going on in Athens, find non-alcoholic events to make the event, the weekend, safer. And at the same time, in talking to the city staff, realized, not only from what they told me at that meeting, but from the reams of paper that they go through in terms of the planning, every year has a book this thick of planning and then results. And each department head turned in a report to me concerning last year's event and what their expenses and their personnel experiences were. And the conclusion on that is that the city is maxed out. The city cannot implement other activities. If there's going to be other activities, and that's a strong possibility, and as I talked to Mrs. McDavid more, there may eventually be more on their end, not necessarily this Halloween, but some of them may be starting this Halloween. But the city cannot sponsor those or implement those. They also suggested that if other groups are implementing activities, that they have them cleared through the city administration, and that if any kind of security is going to be required, that the group that's sponsoring the activity find their own security for that particular group. The department heads, in that conversation, suggested that we take another look at defense proposal from 2001. And so we've done that. We've gotten it out and looked it over, and I have talked to the Police Department quite a bit about that. I've talked to Ron Lucas quite a bit. Obviously, the prices would be a bit different than they were when this was put together five years ago. There would be additional cost to the city to put up a fence. The department had suggested that if we did it, that we should go into a several-year commitment, because you can't really get a feeling for the results unless you follow through and do it for more than one year. Staffing would certainly be something we'd have to face, and it would have to be greatly publicized, so people would be aware that Halloween this year was going to be different. One of the suggestions was to charge admission at the security points, and that that perhaps would at least raise enough money to pay for the increased costs and perhaps begin to cut in to the high cost of entertaining people from all over the state. And at this point, I would like to ask Tom Pyle to talk to us a little bit about this. He was one of the people that I talked to in the Police Department. He was the actual individual that initiated the idea in that Department Head meeting. And so I asked him here tonight to talk a little bit about it and perhaps answer questions you might have. Tom?
I don't recall exactly what we were discussing specifically about Halloween when I raised the topic, but I recall bringing it up as a means of control for the Police Department. I think that we had discussed that the Police Department is saturated on that particular weekend, and we work long and numerous hours, and that perhaps fencing off the downtown area was one idea of controlling the crowd that comes into the area. Because what we typically see is around 11:30, 12:30 at night, the attitudes change, I suppose, when the alcohol that's being consumed takes effect. And I thought that, like I did in 2001, that putting up some kind of a barricade around the area where the event takes place would give the Police Department or some security force some type of control as to the people that are coming into the area, and that it would perhaps act as a deterrent to people who come into the area already extremely intoxicated that would cause problems. So that was the notion that I had with the fence. You know, there are numerous issues that would have to be addressed, but that would be one thing that I think a fence would definitely provide from a policing perspective, is some control of the people who would visit the downtown area. So that's where I brought it up, under the notion that I brought it up under. And I firmly believe that the other issues, I think, are too far out in the future to determine how it would affect the crowd, what would it do with people that would normally come downtown? Would they still come to town and avoid the downtown area? Would there be certain types of animosity towards the fencing end of the area and the party that it's, you know, traditionally been for so many years? So I think there are a lot of issues, but from a policing perspective, I think you definitely would gain some type of control over the individuals that would be in the area.
I have a question. I've volunteered on the safety teams a couple times, and it seems to me that the crowd in the uptown area is more jovial and friendly, and, you know, that more of the problems have occurred at some of the neighborhood parties that go on after uptown is pretty much shut down. And I wonder if you have an opinion about how fencing uptown might affect the neighborhood parties and issues that can come up in other parts of the city?
It could do a number of things to the parties. They could grow. They could remain large all night, because people are afraid to come downtown, because they have to go through some type of a checkpoint. Or they could diminish, because people, if they have to go through a security checkpoint to come downtown, don't necessarily want to come to town, they'll go someplace else for Halloween. So it's really hard to tell. And I couldn't make a guess as to how it would impact the parties. Yeah, and that's why I say, other than to say that we would gain some type of control over the people in the downtown area, the rest of it would be just hypothesis or a best guess. I would say, though, that you're, from Police Department's perspective, you're absolutely right, the people in the downtown area are jovial, right up until a certain point for us. And we typically see an hour where things turn a little darker, so to speak, as far as violence and whatnot, and the fights and assaults will pick up in the area. And it seems to be that midnight hour and on is when our business picks up in that regard. So the parties of last year and in years previous haven't been terrible for us. We expect them, and we know how to deal with them, and there are a lot of them. Other than the one year where we had the incident on Mill Street, we don't have terrible issues with parties that take over again.
Carol, I'd kind of reiterate what I said, you know, at lunch the other day, and what I've said, you know, separately to you. As somebody that goes back to when Halloween was an illegal street takeover, and we tried to turn it into at least somewhat of a sanctioned party, whether that's the correct word to use or not, I don't know. But in the past, when we have looked at this issue, and I have looked at maps and tried to figure out, a fence going across every access uptown. And imagine, if you will, one that goes the length of Court Street, I guess, at the beginning of Court and Union, Washington on two different sides, the other end of Court and, or of Court Street at, well, at the armory, I would suppose, and every street and alley access up and down. The number of people that it's going to take command that, because as wide as those are, what do you have, somebody with a card table in the center and one little access in there, and people coming in and giving you your $5 if you're in costume, or $5 if you're in costume and $10 if you aren't, kind of idea? That's gonna take a lot of community support, and I would assume a different service organization manning each access or organization, a lot of people from whatever, wherever we're going to get them. I would run, be a little bit afraid of it, going back to being an illegal street takeover, rush the gate, kind of a thing. And then what are you gonna do if they do? At what point do you throw in the towel and say, that's what it is? And I'd hate for it to go back to that, because as I used to say 18 years ago, when I was trying to do somewhat what you're trying to do, is anything that starts with an illegal street takeover is not gonna improve much during the night. I mean, that attitude of, you know, we're taking the street back from here is something that scares me just a little. Now, if we can come up with enough sort of service organizations that would be willing to do this, if we could make this a very positive party, I could see that this would be a good thing. But having visited a town in Texas, Galveston, Iowa, and that had done something similar to this, that is how they did it. And they literally had somebody on every street corner, and it, they did a Dicksonian Christmas in their community. They had, at a time of the year when the town was absolutely dead and the Chamber of Commerce was trying to get other things going, this did work out, but it is a tremendous amount of community support. But taking those kind of human resources away from, you know, being in the communities where our true problems are, is that what we want to do? And I don't know. I guess it's time for the discussion, but I'm an old hand at Halloween, and I've watched that crowd for a number of years, and, I don't know, an illegal street takeover scares me, and the attitude that it brings.
Just a couple of responses to some of that. Part of my confidence of feeling that it could be done is the huge amount of planning that goes into Halloween. I know that the Police Department wouldn't take the responsibility lightly, and be primarily police in the streets department that would have to implement it. And I know that Ron Lucas has already been talking to George Hemphillson on, from their perspective, what it would involve. My feelings come from comments in the community of, when is the city going to do something about Halloween? When is the city going to take decisive action? And our own beloved Paul, every single time, when are we going to do something about the expense of Halloween? And this concept addresses those things very strongly. It is, the idea from my perspective is that our students are different than they were five years ago. 911 had not occurred. The security that they encounter almost everywhere they go, and certainly to music concerts and many large gatherings, have similar procedures. And I feel that there's enough respect for security at this point among students, that it might not be as large a problem as it, as what you're referring to, but it is speculative, like Tom said. You know, we can second guess forever of what would happen if, but unless we try something, we won't know.
I have a question about the fence in general. I'm looking over the proposal, I didn't see it, so I apologize if it's in here, but what kind of a fence on?
It isn't in there, and I did talk to Ron Lucas about that a little bit. And what they're talking about is a six-foot-high plastic fence. It's a little stronger than what you would think of as a snow fence, and that it would be secured by ballasts that would pull it tight between the sections, so they wouldn't have to drag post into the ground, and it would be a less complicated installment. And he says that he believes that there are vendors of that type of fence in this general area, and, but he has not checked on the current price and how long the turnaround time would be. So those are obvious questions that have to be resolved, but that was the kind of fence that he and George were considering.
I think that my only concern, as Bill was stating, the illegal rushing of the gates is maybe even.
And one of the things that Tom mentioned is that if people know that it's going to be fenced in, and that discourages out-of-towners from coming to Athens with the purpose of partying downtown, that that might be a positive influence, that it would be kind of beginning to take it back as a more community-focused event. Vujin?
Would, I guess, you know, my main concern about Halloween is the cost to the city, frankly, and of course, the safety of citizens. Would fencing it and causing admission, charging admission, would that basically then pay for the additional security for other areas of the town? I guess I'm interested in understanding.
Again, speculation, totally.
Well, yeah, it's speculation, because we don't know how many, whether people would continue to participate at the same rates. But I was just curious, like, from a, you know, kind of a general perspective, do we think if we had, I don't know, how many people are usually downtown? 10,000, 20,000?
Who had 20,000 at $5 apiece?
Is.
That's 100,000.
100,000.
That would pay for Halloween in its present form.
In its present form, but maybe not for extra security that might be needed in other areas of the city, if there were more parties in other areas of the city. Okay, but there's, because I was, I think if, if this is a proposed solution, and I think it has to be kind of framed correctly, I agree, I think fencing is, you know, in other words, some way of, you know, kind of making it sound more attractive.
Secure.
Secure, and have some interesting events. And if we could kind of raise enough money to pay for additional security, I mean, I like the idea of $10 for certain people. I mean, if we could somehow generate income while making this attractive, I would like to see a few more numbers and suggestions.
I mean, it is a concept that theoretically could get the cost down to a reasonable level for this event. And one of the things that we talked about is... And one of the things that we talked about is getting Halloween calmed down to more like a Palmer Fest level or, you know, some of the other weekends that we have. Those are not, you know, those are a little problematic as well, but from what the department heads told me, there's no comparison between the effort, the money that we put in for a Palmer Fest and a Halloween.
Chris, for you, Cap, well, you have extra volunteer officers from outside the city. What's the, how many approximately do you get? I mean, what, how much are you?
It's in the twenties as far as officers to work foot patrol for the event somewhere. It usually averages twenty-five to twenty-seven extra officers. We team those up with our own officers, which if we have our entire department out right now, it'd be twenty-four officers. Several of those, about six or seven will work the community area in cruisers, answering the noise complaints and the routine calls. The rest, around eighteen or nineteen, would be posted downtown or in the Mill Street area where we were having to send more and more resources recently because of the volume of parties and whatnot. So, on a typical event, we'll have forty, usually forty to fifty officers on foot in the downtown area or the Mill Street area, Miller Palmer area, and then six or seven cruisers throughout the community. And then we also get around twelve to sixteen mounted officers and they also work in the close-in neighborhoods around the downtown, Congress, High, Carpenter, Nell, Palmer, those areas. Usually we have four, four to five horse teams that patrol those areas. So, you're talking seventy roughly all total.
Okay, I guess the reason why I'm asking is because is there, there's probably a theoretical limit to how many extra outside-town assistants you can get before you have one officer who knows the territory and the rest of them don't.
Yeah.
I guess the question is how much would you, you know, extra security is what we're hearing for fenced-in area. And the question at that point is how much extra and how much can you handle? I guess that's the question.
Depends on assignment. Right now, we have those officers that, we team them up with an Athens officer as escorts, but we expect those officers to know the, you know, how to enforce laws that we typically enforce, the order maintenance laws like disorderly conduct offenses and alcohol offenses. And we expect them to, and they do a good job, by the way, of making arrests of their own. So, they basically use our officers as escorts to get around, but beyond that. Now, if you assign a security force just to gate security, that's a pretty straightforward assignment and you say, "Don't let anybody cut the gate or jump over and don't let anybody rush the fence or the gate or anything." I don't know if there is a limit because that's a, you know, it's a pretty.
They don't have to know the territory.
They don't have to know the territory. They have a post and they're in that area and they know what their job is and it wouldn't even necessarily have to be a police officer per se, it could be a private security firm or anything like that.
And it might be that we would have to hire some extra ones. The mayor and I have talked about that as well, that we might have to bring in some additional.
Okay, some of the logistical problems I see off the top is I know many of the bars and many of the storefronts have actually back entrances. I could see them running their own gate as well. I like the idea, you know, the idea of having different organizations covering each gate would work as long as you could keep rotating them so they don't, you know, some would probably make more than others, we'd get a cut of it, I assume, for all of it. I don't know how you want to run that. I would assume that they'd want to do it for a reason, so.
Or do you have to have a police officer actually there?
I think, yeah, I don't know. Well, but you wouldn't have to, you'd have to have more than one person, but you wouldn't necessarily all have to be police officers.
I see.
The other question is how, you still have to be able to determine who's a resident, who isn't. I guess you have some kind of idea when they get in. Again, if five dollars a shot, twenty thousand people, that would be a hundred thousand.
And some of those wouldn't be in costumes, so they'd pay ten.
What is the resident, non-resident?
Somebody who lives in an apartment above, let's say, Brennan's or one of the stores. How, they say, "I gotta get home."
Oh, oh, I see.
Why do I have to pay five dollars to get home?
Oh, I see.
Right. And private property issues need, would need to be hammered out. And the law director said that he felt that perhaps it's an idea that's finally reached its time, but that one of the things that we needed to address very carefully is that no fences put on private property, they all have to be in the right way.
Alleyways are private property these days, aren't they?
Some are, some aren't. But we close off the alleys already, right? I know there's low triangles on the map that the alleys are already blocked off. Jim?
When you started this discussion, you said you'd like to have some indication of where we're going to go by the time students leave. Well, that's less than a month away.
I know.
And obviously, there are a lot of questions to be answered and research to be accomplished. I think it's worth while continuing the discussion, but I can't see that we're going to have even a firm decision, a firm estimate by the first.
Well, another thing that drives the date is how much lead time we need to get a fence. We have no idea about that. Ron is looking into that. And I guess part of my feeling is if the students knew it was even under strong discussion, which that was part of why I wanted it coming up tonight, that they would leave with some knowledge of that and also that we would hear from them before they leave. Vujenko?
I know I'd mentioned this to you before. I mean, I think a key thing is even thinking about it is making sure that once you get in the gate, there are interesting things to do or it's attractive. And so, I mean, is the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee also kind of behind this and looking at some other, I want to say.
Yeah, Charles.
Yeah, yeah, looking at some.
Actually, there's more than, I mean, we have six people at that conversation with council, all on the Clean and Safe Committee, so they are out there.
I would say studying kind of attract, you know, fun things to do, things that would be attractive enough, you know, to come in and not stay outside and parade around. I mean, I think that's an issue. And I know that we had a couple of students at that session and they didn't seem terribly enthused about the idea of paying to get in. So, I guess I, I guess, I don't know, I guess President McDavid is behind this, right? Because I think it.
No, not strongly. His wife was much more positive than he was about it. He had some of the same questions that we have.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I guess two things. One, I'm kind of interested in hearing from Amy, her sense of where the students might be, and also.
Right.
Right. And also, I think for us to think about ways of really, I want to say, generating support, you know, and, you know, through the university, you know, maybe through student groups, through wonderful groups like the, you know, men's water polo team, who is behind, I know he's gone, but I want to recognize that. So, I guess I'm wondering, you know, Amy, from your perspective, you know, where do you think students are and how might we work better to promote it with them?
Well, the general statement as to where students stand, I would say that they are certainly in favor of keeping Halloween, maybe at all, whatever cost it would take to keep Halloween. It's certainly a big, big attraction for students, you know, each year and of course their friends to come in and kind of just a big festival for students to attend. So, I think that they're obviously supportive and working with the city or would be supportive and working with the city is to keep the Halloween and to keep it safe, too. I mean, I think that there's a real misconception among some of the students here that they don't want, you know, or they're not safe. And there's certainly, there's a small percentage of students who are, you know, who act out and then reflect negatively on the students in general. So, I think that the students are certainly, they want to keep Halloween and of course want it to be as safe as possible as, you know, I do. You know, I was in the safety team, did the safety thing last year. What I was really hoping that Halloween would promote as far as getting involved or the students getting involved with the actual event, would more students volunteering on the safety team. I don't know what that would do in terms of reducing costs. If we had more volunteers, if we would then have to reduce the amount of officers that we paid some people look into. But students obviously want to keep Halloween and, you know, when it comes up each year, it's the students who want to keep Halloween. So, and stating that, we'll do whatever it takes to keep Halloween. Charging a fee, I don't think that that's unreasonable. I think that there would have to be certain, you know, ways in which we charge and, you know, how much it would be, five to ten dollars. I don't know if that sounds, if that's unreasonable. I'm trying to think, if I would pay five dollars to come uptown into a fenced-in sort of festival area, I do think that if we are charging an admission to that fenced-in area that, as you said, Vujenko, there needs to be some sort of fence going on inside the fenced-in area to where we would even want to pay to enter into the uptown streets. Why even come up to Court Street when we could just stay down on the other streets and, you know, participate in those activities that you don't have to pay to go to theoretically? So, I mean, I know that I met with Student Senate, some of the Student Senate members this evening as I try and do on a weekly basis and I let them, I told them that Halloween was a part of discussion and that we're going to be meeting next week, so hopefully some of Student Senate can come and voice more general opinions as to what the student body is thinking about Halloween.
Actually, it probably won't be discussed again for two weeks.
Right, okay, two weeks. Well, if it's not on the agenda next week and we allow the speaker to get in.
Right, right. I'll take Paul and then I'll make a couple of comments and we'll move on.
Part of the discussion at McDavid's lunch was to keep it or kill it. And part of the other discussion of that is, what do we want to be successful? When does it get too successful? When does it get too big? When does it, is it just right? You know, conceptually, I like the idea of charging nothing for a costume and something for no costume. That's just me because I probably wish more costume. I always think when I'm wearing a costume, it's more fun.
I do, too, but there are two sides to that. The other is that we'd like to have the revenue to pay for the thing.
Yes, I'm wearing that. But that's it. When does it, you know, at sixty thousand, is it too much? Sixty thousand people, twenty thousand people? You know, where do they all stay after hours at that point? If the dorm's only a one student, you know, guest per dawn, that's another nine thousand. That means the rest of them are on the streets trying to figure out where they're going to crash. And, you know, I know there's discussion of trying to have another event afterwards, a late-night event. So, these are things that have to be looked at. And again, I like the concept of Halloween, but I don't like the cost and that's where I've always been on.
Right. Well, and another thing that might be possible, if there are other things going on, that there might be a package deal. And we did talk about that at the conversation with council and they kind of, the students that were there liked that, that there might be other things that their coupon book or whatever would allow them entry, too. Right. The only other comment I wanted to make is we do have three ordinances specific to Halloween and so we need to begin looking at them. And I just wanted to comment that on the first ordinance is banning parking and closing a portion of Court Street and I believe that that is the one that if we were going to introduce fencing, that we should put it into that ordinance and then we would have to decide if we by ordinance are going to charge admission. I would assume council would have to make that decision. So, those are the possible changes to the first ordinance. The second ordinance is the noise ordinance and, Tom, it might be helpful, you suggested at that meeting that we not put times, specific times on the noise ordinance, or I don't know if it was you or someone else, I'm attributing everything to you. But we did talk about maybe taking out some of the specific language and instead refer to the specific area, the fenced-in area or something along that line. Would you like to comment on that?
I don't recall exactly what we talked about. I know the discussion, we had the discussion and maybe the American.
Well, the, I think one of the points on there was that the noise ordinance is primarily suspended because we're sponsoring in essence with Clean and Safe Halloween, two band stands.
Right.
And it really should be tied to when those band stands shut down because what we've had in some years has been competing bands up on West State Street on balconies and such and saying, we're saying, "Turn it down." They're saying, "Oh, the noise, noise," and says, "I can play to three," you know? I mean, because it's suspended everywhere. And so, that's where if we want to focus it on the Court Street area and what it is, rather than put a time thing on it, the time thing just defeats itself.
Okay. And perhaps referring specifically to the band stands.
Right, the time they shut down.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the third ordinance is the vending ordinance and the only suggestion I had specifically from the department heads on that one was that we started at noon instead of two o'clock, that they felt people are gathering in town earlier than the two o'clock that we now have it and that that would facilitate things to have, that vending start at noon. And there was also the possible suggestion of adding a bullet section for penalty for noncompliance on the vending. Any comments or suggestions on any of those possible changes to the.
In terms of the vending and the bandstand, if we are discussing fencing this off, should we, obviously the concept is not to charge the bands or the stage and then the stage hands and then the roadies and the roadie's brother and the roadie's cousins. Is there going to be some kind of process about the, and the same thing applies to vending, too? Because you could see all of a sudden, instead of, you know, two, they'll need extra personnel anywhere.
Assistants, they'd have twelve assistants, right.
I guess this would be one way to make sure we have vending going on and this would be one of the activities to bring people into the fence. Is that what you're thinking?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Vujenko, I just want to add a positive note, maybe. You know, some students have said to me that they don't go to Halloween because it's too rowdy and it's dangerous and everything. And I wonder if we were to, you know, make it a more, I guess, enclosed and less rowdy event, whether we might attract, you know, another crowd and more students.
Right, that's been part of the discussion.
And different students. So, I think there could be some advantage here to kind of creating a different environment uptown. You're looking perplexed.
No, I just had, I have just an additional comment and an idea. I don't know how plausible this is, but as far as charging entrances fees into the fenced-in area, are we able to charge more to the out-of-town people? Is that unreasonable? I mean, the only reason I mention that is because in a lot of the police reports, it seems to be it's a lot of the out-of-town people causing the most problems.
Maybe an OUID gets you a lower rate.
But mostly out-of-town problems are actually causing outside the area.
Outside the area.
So, we, you know.
Would you agree with that scenario, that most of the out-of-towners arrested or not arrested uptown?
We arrest a cross-section of students. I mean, there are several schools represented on our jail roster and I've never actually taken the time to sit down and determine exactly where they are arrested, but I can tell you on Halloween night, the majority of our arrests, simply because that's where the officers are focused, you know, you're talking forty officers in the downtown area versus seven or eight in the outline areas, the majority of our arrests come from the Halloween area during the time the event's going on. And I would agree with Ms. Bishop that, I have also heard, we call it intelligence in the police department, but I've also heard that Nemoc University students go home that weekend because they don't want to deal with the headache of having guests over and where are they sleeping and they tear their houses up and whatnot. So, I think you're on the right track when you say that out-of-town people cause a good deal with problems that are associated from policing perspective with Halloween, so.
Paul?
Can we ask anybody in the audience to have anything?
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment? You woke them up.
Sorry.
Anyone else? If not, we will, what I'd like to do is have another. If not, we will, um, I, what I'd like to do is have another conversation, um, in two weeks and kind of decide at that point if we're going to try to go for fencing and admission this year or not. So I need you to search your thoughts.
Well, Carol, do you want to have a formal six o'clock conversation?
If you would like.
Well, I think it's one of the more interesting issues.
I think that was, well, in all the council conversations I've been through, that was the most productive, was the Halloween conversation.
Okay. Well, let's plan on, excuse me, that one two weeks from now, which would be May twenty-second? Is that right? Today's the eighth.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, six o'clock, and we'll have the conversation on Halloween.
I have one more question about if we're going to talk about it in two weeks, is there a way that we can get more information on the fence and if there's other festivals or in other towns that have used this type of fencing or what more of the logistics on the fencing and what it would entail?
Um, you're working on getting some.
I actually did, um, I called, um, Urbana Police Department, Champaign Police Department. Um, I had a conversation with the chiefs of both departments today. I was under the impression that, that one of those, you know, Champaign, Urbana, the, the twin city there, that, uh, where the University of Illinois kind of cuts across both those cities. I was under the impression that they had a similar event and did this kind of thing, but that's not true. Uh, the chief from Champaign, R.T. Fili, I believe his name is, uh, was actually the chief of Carbondale, where the University of Southern Illinois, uh, had, uh, every year a quote Halloween event. But their event was very different, according to the chief. And I had a thirty-minute conversation with him today. Their event was completely different than, than what we're talking about with our current Halloween event. Their event was, as he described it, more akin to, um, what we would, uh, our time-change event, um, where it was like bar closing, people spun out into the street, and it was actual riot, uh, where they had to respond, uh, in, in some, uh, riot response from the police department. They never used fences. And that, that's the only place that I've heard of. Uh, but I'd be more willing to contact, uh, you know, any, any period that, uh, throughout the country where something like this take place, but I just don't know.
Yeah, I had always heard that, um, Champaign, Urbana as well, I think I talked to that. Pacheco?
Okay, I was gonna say, yeah, for this conversation, since Amy brought up more information, um, I was wondering if the Clean and Safe people or other people who are working on this could kind of come with some ideas about what kinds of activities that have been, I know people have been working on this for years. You know, thinking about could take place.
Right.
It within the, within the special area.
Right.
And, and also, and, and this is probably some city code, but I was wondering, is it possible to, in a sense, I'll say it this way, take a cut of some of the things that are sold within the area, like that the vendors sell? I mean, is this possible? Like, you know, whether it's t-shirts?
We tried that.
Or food?
Um.
Or beer? But this, you know, on that night, it costs a little more.
Well, and the problem was, is that they, the reporting was.
Ah, the reporting, of course.
Honor system and, uh.
And so they made a lot of money.
Collecting it was very challenging.
Ah, yes.
I think the, uh, was it, Gary Hunter said that we couldn't really surcharge beer or, um, you know, statements of that nature from last year's.
Well, unless, I mean, of course, I mean, who would brainstorm all this, but there is like a festival t-shirt done by, you know, some city committee. And the proceeds do, we'd have to sell a lot of them, help out. But anyway, that goes, that's.
I believe we've tried that.
Everything was gonna try.
We've had t-shirts that were licensed.
Oh, yeah.
Well, all of that, you know, let's, let's, uh, just open the floodgate.
Literally what we did was the, um, Uptown Dog came up with, uh, the official t-shirt every year.
Oh, yeah.
And the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee got a cut of what they sold those for.
Yeah, right.
Uh, you know, I don't know that the city itself could, that was when literally I would go door-to-door on Court Street and ask for donations to run buses and buy porta-potties and all of that kind of thing, security for a bandstand and all that. That was before the city contributed anything. And back then, uh, the gentleman that ran Uptown Dog, uh, was willing to contribute that much to it. So, that was how, uh, we never copyrighted a logo or anything like that. The discussion has been had, but from everything I understand, if we make an official, all somebody has to do is alter it slightly.
Right, right. Well, if lots of people make money, that's okay, as long as we do to cover expenses. But anyway.
Dan just raised a question for me that I've heard before, that the donations that are collected by the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee now currently go to pay for the stage equipment and stuff like that. It's not, at this point, the city's paying for porta-potties and for, you know, the police protection and all that for us.
There's no cost.
Right. So, I think that the, the money that's being raised by that now is pretty specifically directed toward the entertainment.
Generally Domino's has sponsored the buses that haul people from the fairgrounds uptown. Uh, I think the Athens News, I don't know, I haven't been involved in quite a few years now. Believe me, you will have a burnout factor real fast on this, Carol. Uh, but the, uh, you would get other sponsors for the bandstand. Uh, I, we literally raised money privately from Les Cornwell and many others for security around the bandstand. And I guess that's the one thing that scares me, the experience that I had with that, uh, that scares me about the fencing and people rushing, was, uh, we had gotten, and not to drag this out anymore, but, uh, private security to maintain the fence in front of the band that was at the end of Court Street. And, uh, they had one of the worst nights ever known to man.
Right.
Uh, by people constantly pushing against it.
That's why we change where they are, you know?
I think we had a second one or more.
Solve that much of that problem.
Yeah.
Because you are in a real confined space there.
Okay, I think Amy had one more comment than.
I just, yeah, I, one additional comment, sorry. I was just was looking over my notes from the last conversation with council and just in furthering the collection of information before we discuss about, discuss this again, is I believe Jennifer Simon in the chamber said they were going to do an online survey to get some business input as well. So, um, maybe we'll try and collect that from her, them beforehand.
Can you come to a microphone, please?
You can sit down and go to the podium, good choice.
Larry Payne with the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce, yes, and we're going to do that. One thing that Nelsonville does, the Prairie of the Hills, is they do charge a percentage, but it's mostly all local vendors. Now, there are out-of-towns too, but that could change your focus of going to a community event. If your vendors were organizations that were raising funds, you know, which would come back in the community, it might bring more community people uptown and also calm, you know, the crowd down that it's a event for the community. So that's something you might think about. Is there an event like that, I think about two or three years ago? So that's where they raised funds. And that goes back into the Prairie of the Hills.
I thought in part of the vending laws that we have, we have a clause in there for, um.
We do.
For nonprofits, actually don't get charged.
They are not charged.
But they don't really show up that much.
Right, that's the thing is, it's a huge event, but that could change the focus a little bit if, if, you know, that was the emphasis. Because I know you're trying to make it more of a community event, so.
It could seem more safe, more of them might.
Yeah, exactly.
Choose to make that an event for their fundraising.
I think they're making money in their parking lots.
It's amazing how much you can make that night. I know I had, was selling hot dogs for Alzheimer's, and we made, I think fifteen hundred dollars in literally a few hours. So, you know, I would really encourage a lot of the nonprofits to look at it.
Fifteen, okay. All right. I will turn the meeting back over to Nancy.
Okay, so, um, Paul, Paul and I were working on the elusive late rental permit fee problem, and we found that, um, you want to go ahead, Paul, you can?
Uh, well, you want to, whatever you want to do. Um, originally I was thinking, trying to bring this on finance personnel, but it actually fits closer to city services. Both of us, actually, I guess individually went to, um, the code ops and said how many people are overdue and how much we're talking about. And we've got a current list. I think Nancy gave me a list, uh, that was about a month or two old, which is about nine pages worth. I think we're down to about three pages worth, about a hundred and twenty-two outstanding rental permits. Um, uh, the previous rental permit overdue ones was, I think, sometime in March, and that one actually had the fees listed. So I kind of cross-referenced them with the fees of the present outstanding ones. And, and it comes to, some were ninety-dollar fees, of course, some were multiple housing. And it comes to a approximate total of, um, nine thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, these are the outstanding ones as of, um, this is as current as of five-five. So that's where we are right now. That was Friday, I guess. Um, the discussion we had last time is charging some kind of late fee for this. Um, I think the dialogue got to be a set price or a percentage. If you're starting at percentage, you can do the math of that, nine thousand and change, that would come down to about nine hundred a thousand. Um, if you want to do a higher percentage, ten percent, twenty percent, this is your choice. The section that we probably have to modify is in the housing regulations, probably twenty-nine, um, let me see if I can find it again. There's a section in twenty-nine oh-three, which is the rental dwelling and housing permit section, twenty-nine oh-three oh-seven, expiration and renewals. And it says at this point, every rental dwelling and housing, rooming house permit shall be renewed annually on January second. All we'd have to do is put a clause in there for a late fee would be charged to this.
And, and we were talking the other time about having the late fees start the first of March. And I talked to Teresa and she said probably a fixed would be better than a, than a percentage because of this. Now, in order to go from the list that was voluminous down to this smaller list of twenty-one, they made phone calls, they sent letters. If each letter cost five or ten dollars to send, then we're, we should probably charge.
Teresa Cardis essentially said this is the list that they sent to Lisa Liasin, which means.
For prosecution.
For that, that's where it is right now. So it had to go through quite a few, you know, actions before it got there. Go ahead.
So January second is when you're supposed to have the permit renewed by?
Yes.
And then we would allow for a monthly way and then start charging?
That's sixty days. I think that's very generous. My water bill is like five days. I mean, it seems that, I would think thirty days.
That would be thirty days from the first of, um, from February.
Well, January second is due February, yeah.
Yeah. But their operation is to have it, um, due the first, I think, the first of February. On that first list, that's when it was. So it would be thirty days.
Thirty-day leeway?
Yeah.
It takes a few weeks to get them out.
Also, it's sent on January second.
That's what I was trying to say.
Okay, in other words, it's sent on January second or sent?
No, I mean, it's sent in January.
But it's, it's not due on January second. Okay, that's what I heard.
Due January thirtieth.
Yeah, it's due January thirtieth.
Thirty days plus.
So then having a late fee.
Okay, so.
After March first.
We're, we're proposing twenty dollars, aren't we?
I wasn't proposing anything. I, I, I was up to anything. I heard Amy wanted higher, I was thinking percentage myself.
I want higher. Well, keep in mind that, uh, some of these, the same person owns multiple units, so they're going to get hurt, hit pretty hard by, you know, having a, a fee in general. I, I mean, it may be enough to, to get them off the dime and, and start them paying it in a more trendy fashion.
Well, twenty would be about twenty percent, I mean, twenty would be about almost twenty percent.
Just a one-time twenty-dollar fee?
And then after that, it goes to the prosecutor, right? Well, what do you want, another one, another twenty?
Well, I mean.
I think your fee has to be cost-based, is what, what the law director will tell us, because it's not supposed to be a money-making, it's supposed to be recovering the cost of going after and trying to collect from these people.
Which is, and I asked Lisa about.
And that's how our basis is too, and, but you know, I think Teresa can tell you roughly about what it's high, it takes, but Carol was right, is that, you know, of those hundred and twenty-six, I would say multiple owners are at least a hundred of them.
And I asked, um, Teresa, well, Teresa did say, and I thought twenty was a fair coverage for the amount of work that was done, um, with respect to that. And then, um, she also, I asked her, I said, give me some insight into why these people who you would expect would pay their bills haven't done it. And she said, well, it is when they feel like it. So we'll just make them feel like it in February rather than August or November.
And with no penalty, it's like, okay, which thing do I, do I pay off? The thing that has a big penalty or the thing?
Well, and keeping that much money, if they are multiple landlords and their account is better buyers is.
Right. Yeah, they're making money off of what they're not paying us.
So what needs to be determined is the late fee date and the amount of the late fee. Is that what I'm hearing? And?
Well, if it's a fee or if it's a percentage?
No, it's a fee. It's a, I, I think we have to go with the fee. She said explicitly she didn't want a percentage. And I, you know, I think they've got enough to do.
Sure.
She does the access database and she's talented on that, but there are limits. And I, I'd like, from what she said about how they got from the bigger list to the smaller list, we're talking about a, basically an investment that was probably roughly in time, maybe about, if you think about letters as being five to ten dollars each, that's what everybody says it costs.
Really?
Twenty dollars is a bargain.
Yeah, but this is the result of three or four attempts to.
Yes, nudges.
Contacting these people. So we're, we're trying to eliminate.
Absolutely.
Those. So, so therefore, it would be less than twenty dollars right now. If they, if they've expended twenty dollars to get the list pared down to this point that they're sending it to the law director, and they expended about twenty dollars on each of those owners, well, they've, they've made those four attempts. What we're going to do is kick them with a fine as the first attempt, and then a bigger fine for the second, et cetera. But I don't think twenty dollars is, twenty dollars is at the endpoint right now. Where do we start it?
Um, I, I kind of disagree with Nancy in terms of, I'd rather see a percentage, because again, if we're talking about a service base, how much, the, the sliding scale we have right now is multiple, uh, housing units get a, a lesser fee. It's fifty-five if it's over ten, I believe, something like that. We change that. So the idea there is if we have a conglomerate that's not, you know, a housing unit that has five or six, you know, or ten houses in there, the, the idea of bundling that to one letter saying you owe this much is, is cheaper.
They do get separate ones, I think, though.
What?
They have probably a list. But the point is that it wasn't my decision about the, the fixed amount, it was, I asked her.
The administration.
The administration of it and how she keeps track. And it's almost a one-man, one-person showdown there. And so, you know, I respected that opinion and that's why I came up with the fixed amount.
I would defer to that. I'm kind of with that.
Yeah, in terms of just deciding whether or not should be percentage or a flat fee, at what point do we stop trying to collect the, spending money in terms of trying to collect the fee, the permit fee from the property owners? I mean, at what point do we stop, you know, if that twenty dollars is to cover, what, we send them four, two or four letters and then we stop and it goes to the, I mean, how do we recover those costs in terms of charging it percentage?
There's several, uh, there, there's a couple of concepts out there that you could look at. Interesting enough, there's a section in here, let me see if I can find it. Um, the permit, let's see, fees, I think fees issued, permits issued after July first would be half the amount of the fee for that year. Now, that's an interesting concept. So in other words, if I procrastinate to July first on this, I might actually get a half a year of payment on this. Now, that's assuming a new one.
That's assuming a new one.
Okay. But let's look at it this way. Suppose we have a cutoff date for a late fee and a cutoff date for a revocation or non-issuance of your permit for next year. Now, it'd have to be soon enough so the, the students who are trying to get the leases done, uh, don't fall short on this, but I don't know what date that is, cutoff date. When does, when does a student actually start looking for their new apartment?
You get to school in the fall. Honestly, my house is a five-bedroom house and was rented out. Honestly, my house is a five-bedroom house and was rented out. We were notified by the landlords. Our house was rented out in September. I mean, that's how quickly some of the places go in Athens, is people find their place for next year, the year that they're moving in.
So if we do not, conceptually, if we do not give them the permit, let's say, okay, due date is, late fee is at March, we'll retain it further. Late fee goes to end of March, mid-April. No more permit at that point. That gives everybody from mid-April to get the deposit back from said landlord who now can't rent.
Well, that's taking a big fat jump.
I have no problem taking that, taking the big fat jump.
Well, I mean, I think it's probably a great idea, but let's, why don't we try seeing how much action we get from this late fee next year?
Okay.
And then, you know, put it on the first of March, and then see whether we cancel it once. Now, there are still some that have not paid last year, and those are in court right now. So I think it's only one. So, I mean, it's, it's just not, we have to pay our bills and we want the money.
Sure. Again, out of curiosity, at what point do we turn them over to the law director?
They, this, this list would give it to the law director.
Okay.
Sometime in the past week or so.
So, yeah. And so, we could ask his advice on that, if we should change.
Okay.
Is everybody basically in agreement with this? More info?
So what's, what's the dollar amount right here? Twenty? So we just, you're making a face?
No, I just want to make sure that with that twenty dollars, that we're not, we're not, you know, overextending the resources spent towards collecting that permit, that that twenty dollars is covering the letters that go out on collection.
And the phone calls.
And the phone calls, and, yeah, all the hours spent. I want to make sure that that is what's covering what is rightfully, you know, the city's.
Let's ask the law director what he wants beyond that, you know, for cost recovery, of these court costs.
Okay, so the collection process doesn't start until the bill is late. So the bills?
Late the first of March, about.
Late the first of March. So if you pay it on March third, you pay your bill plus twenty bucks.
That's what the ordinance would say, and it would be dependent on the, on the administrative discretion at that point, I think.
What do you mean, dependent on the administrative?
Well, I mean, it's always dependent on that.
You mean, you could talk them out of the late fee?
I wouldn't try it. I wouldn't try it. I wouldn't try it. I mean, but the normal assumption would be that if you get it on, on the first of March, or else you're going to pay twenty dollars on top of each of them.
And it's due January second.
It's due January second, so, you know, we've given them a month.
As it is.
And it's not like it's a surprise expense, it's not like.
It wasn't due January second.
What are you saying?
But then what happens between, what happens between March first and May third, which is where we are now?
The two months?
Yeah.
That's where they, that's where they took the ones that were overdue and started making the phone calls and they're sending out the letters. So they've already done that. So they pared the list down.
Yeah, all I'm saying is.
Oh, is that what you're asking?
If I paid my bill on March third, I'm going to pay twenty bucks. If I wait till May third, I'm still going to pay twenty bucks.
Who do you want to?
Well, I just thought we were going to have incremental.
Yes, I, I.
Saying, because as the mayor said, we need to be recovering our costs, and our costs start at some point and they go up as we.
On the first of March, yeah.
As we spend.
Maybe you get on June. I have a clarification here about, because I thought before I asked whether it was due on January second, and then somebody said it was sent in January.
It is.
It's, no, it says here, every rental dwelling and rooming house permit shall be renewed annually on, shouldn't say by, on June second. So this to me.
January, January.
January, I'm sorry. This says that it is due on, on January second. So if we give, that, we're giving them sixty days of leniency, I think that's a little excessive. I think we should give them thirty days. If it's due on January second, and people are going to start calling them and writing them letters.
It's not like there's a full agreement with you.
Okay, well, then, and then.
I think February second, they, they begin to accumulate late fees. And it says January thirtieth.
Yeah, it says January thirtieth, you get thirty days after that from this. You want, you're according to this.
What section are you talking?
A letter, as it's done by administration, follows that procedure. I mean, you can say it's due, but how can you mail out, seventy-five percent of the properties are rental, they can't be mailing them all the same day.
Okay, so in other words, they don't respond till we mail the letter?
Well, I don't know.
Okay.
Some probably do. What we're trying to do is prevent a list this strict with lots of phone calls, and so, all right, let me go back and say, could we try the penalty on the first of March, on or about the first of March, of twenty dollars, and see how it works, and if we need to find someone, we can do it?
I, I kind of agree with Jim that there should be a second penalty.
Okay. What do you want?
June?
Incremental. Well, first. Ten dollars for every additional thirty days.
Yeah.
I mean, you're already giving them that.
And that's, yeah, and, and.
There's a lot of.
And I think it has to be clear about when it's due.
The limit that you can charge percentage of the original amount, like per year.
What about that guy that owes seventy-four thousand dollars to the Elections Commission? That's not helping.
He won't be running for office again. It was in the paper last week.
Let's get too much discretion.
It seems to me, if we cannot figure out when it's due, and that's what it looks like to me.
No, 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 it's not fair.
No, no, this says, well, this says it is due January second. Now, what I hear people saying is, well, maybe the letters go out. So all I'm saying is, maybe it ought to be, if, if there seems to be some, and I can say that I am confused about due date, then maybe they are too. Maybe we ought to look at clarifying that language and saying, the letters go out within this two-week period, and as of X date, it's late and it's here the fees.
If you haven't paid it, you get a bill that says it's due the thirtieth of March.
And that's what it says, and that's.
So it's an administrative level of.
And that's an administrative, we don't want to get involved in that level of.
This is our landlord.
Is there?
Don't start.
Is there room in the budget for a rental permit collection officer?
Teresa does an admirable job, just pushes them more. Okay, so do you want in ten dollars each month it remains unpaid over and above, or do you want?
I, I don't even think it's pushing them. I think it's giving them some tools to be able to have some leverage.
When's there, when do we revoke permits?
We don't.
Well, that's, we have some information on that.
Oh, we're doing the fee first, and then we're going to try the.
It's like the water bill, so, you know.
Right.
You want to, they could talk about that. Put ten percent on it, it gets people's attention and they.
Right.
Well, portion picket is from two dollars to five.
Right.
I mean, that's a, that's a.
And you have forty-eight hours to pay it. I mean, why are we giving the landlords such?
Yeah, forty-eight hours, no, but fed interest rate.
Yeah. I mean, it seems to me we're much more lenient on the landlords than we are on, you know, regular jobs.
I'll go back and see.
Okay, so where are we now? We've got a straight.
Twenty and ten each month thereafter, is what I'm doing.
Okay, so.
Starting first of March.
So first of March is late fee. Thirty days after, ten dollars extra. These are late fees and not penalties, or penalties and not late fees? Cost, late fees, cost of doing this.
So we're going to wait and see if the fees help the situation, and if not, we're going to go to revoking permits?
As of right now, we haven't talked about revoking permits. There's a point system that's in your mailbox.
Okay.
That's a whole can of worms we can open up another time after we've solved Halloween and done all the other things that we have to do. Right now, I just don't feel like opening that can.
But you, you're welcome to do it if you.
You're welcome to do it next week.
Why don't my landlord next year have her permit renewed?
Yeah, well, your landlord gets it.
Okay, so we'll try putting that together sometime in a timely manner, like next week, maybe, or maybe, is that possible, do?
Okay.
You need assistance, or?
I don't know.
I guess we should check with the law director along the way.
Absolutely.
Debbie Shaker, nodding yes.
She says we should.
Okay.
All right. That adjourns my City Services Committee except to state that I will be reinstating the ordinance that I missed that weekend next month.
Do I have a couple?
Yes.
Can I have a miscellaneous name?
Sure.
Sure. I'll talk about water and sewer. In the engineering fees that we did for the water lines and the pump house on Columbus Road, we, I think you allocated seventy-five thousand dollars. We did sixty-four-five of that for the water line, and just started with ten-five on the pump house. We need, we're about ready to clear environmental on the pump house, and need another thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for engineering services on that.
Do you want that to come in out of finance or out of? I guess I would appropriate it.
Out of water.
Okay.
Well, it's a water fund expenditure, I thought you wanted to.
Well, I'll be happy to, all right.
Either one can do it.
No, good, thank you.
The ordinances for the water and the sewer project on Columbus Road, I think without appropriating funds, we should probably get ready to bid those and start that through. They're at EPA for the PTIs. Don't know what they're going to be, but especially when the sewer fund, where we're upfronting all of this money and getting seventy-five percent back from FEMA, I'd rather hold off on the borrowing until I have to.
Good deal.
Award the contract, and now you may have to move quickly, you know, when that comes with prior knowledge, it shouldn't be a problem. But I'd like to start on those. And then.
Would those come from bond council, mayor? Would the, would this borrowing come from a bond council, or would it just?
Yes, it would.
Okay. So could we, we could get it and then act on it immediately? Would be.
Well, I just want the numbers to fill in for bids, is the only part we can, you know, do it that way. The other thing is on the, as we talked about some, we were paying down a loan on the EPA thing. As you know, we've been doing quarterly monitoring on that, and of course, on the eighth quarter, they took a small hit, and one monitoring well. And the only thing really different about this, and it really relates also to nineteen ninety-nine, when the EPA first detected it, it was, the water table was, was at its highest. And so that's why what the engineering and everything thinks, if there is anything or whatever, is there's probably about twenty feet down. They've worked with EPA to do some testing areas of it. Well, of course, they have to continue the monitoring, and we budgeted for that. They want sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for additional testing to try to locate it, then we'll have to have a remediation plan. So I need about nineteen thousand more in the internal service fund. There's twenty-three thousand, I think, in the unappropriated balance.
And which one of them, and which one of them had a pit?
M seven.
M seven? Okay. Is that close to the service fund? You have a map on you?
Not with me, but it's, let's see. The southwest, well, M seven, southwest of the service garage, near where the underground storage tank, UST, was removed several years ago, so it's in the same genre area.
The southwest corner, okay. I mean, I, I was trying to figure out where it was. Thank you, I'll get it right there. Do you have that too?
You can have that.
Okay. I don't, I don't know if you really want it. Okay, so nineteen thousand, needed an internal service fund for that. That will also be coming out. Any more miscellaneous, expensive as it is? Okay, I'm going to do one.
Parks and Recreation will come to order, and the first thing on the agenda is Stroud's Run. And what I've tried to do is I took sort of a compilation of the things we've talked about, the, the comments of the law director, the comments of Phil Cantino, who is here this evening, and I'm not an ordinance writer, but I put it all together to try to give you an idea of how it would go together. Certainly, if there are things that you think should be left out that are in, or in that are out, that you want out, those are the kinds of things I want to ascertain tonight, because I'd like to put the ordinances together and the final, final of the agreement together so that the law director can have one more shot at them. So what I did, first ordinance, the wheress is, the first one's the mission statement from the task force. The second one is the vision statement from the task force. The third one just states that Stroud's Run Task Force recommended that the city take over operation management and maintenance of Stroud's Run Park. The next one is the citizen survey from the fall of our five, showed the majority of respondents favorable to the city taking over Stroud's Run Park. The next one begins the, the comments that came from Phil Cantino and the Conservancy District, Conservancy, whatever. And the first one is that they shall not permit commercial timber harvesting, extraction of coal, oil, gas, and it specifies only, the only thing that we would have control over is those that are currently owned by the state, or removal of plans for commercial purposes or personal use. The next one is no cutting of trees should be permitted except for park service or park maintenance. That's different than timbering. Next one is the motorized vehicles. We have an ordinance, it was one oh-one oh-four. I don't know where it is in the code, but I thought that language should be in there. And then finally, that the city agrees that we're not going to do any residential, commercial or industrial development. Then, the sections of the actual ordinance, just, the first one is to allow the mayor and safety service, service safety director to enter into the attached partnership agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Division of Parks and Recreation, and repeats the language about the Dahl Lake Dam. I know it was asked, would ODNR be willing to take out the language until such time as the dam was brought up into compliance with the state's Division of Water Dam Regulatory Program? And their answer was they would prefer not to. And the reason for that is that they would like to use this agreement as models for any subsequent agreements that they enter into in other areas, and so they want that language to be a part of it. I included, I didn't know if it was necessary, but section two, the mayor is authorized to accept the forty-nine thousand five hundred, correction there, from ODNR, as a one-time operational assistance. Section three is to establish the date of the actual exchange of property, which would be sometime in the fall. And then I added in section four, to the part about the one-year termination, some reasons that could be, but not limited to, the failure of ODNR and the Department of Wildlife to provide adequate support, failure to manage the, failure on the city's part to manage the property in an acceptable manner, failure to establish supporting or funding to support the life of the park. ODNR agreement, which I attached again, and the only changes that I had for that, although I know in my conversation with the mayor, you suggested that perhaps we reword the second paragraph from the bottom of the first page, that refers to the, the funding, and maybe just include the forty-nine five for the one-time operational assistance. The rest gets a little confusing. But the mayor, or the law director suggested that we could add the including all associated mineral rights currently owned by the state. And there are two places that could be. It could either be added as wheress, or as the number eight in the agreement. And the only other addition is the addition of boats in number seven, and they already said they were fine with the addition of boats. I, I do not think there'll be any objection to any of these changes with ODNR in the conversations that I've had, the mayor's had, and Kevin's fought about. So that's the first ordinance. And the second ordinance just refers to the agreement with the Department of Wildlife, Division of Wildlife, and it just follows the same form. It's much more simple, it just authorizes entering into the agreement. The wheress, it just says that the city acknowledges that the continued use from the Division of Wildlife for trash enforcement, hunting season signage maps, PR, wildlife management, and stocking of lake, I seem to be missing a verb or something there, would be required or, or something along that line, just to acknowledge what it is that we are asking of them, or that they are offering, and then the rest of the ordinance just is the, the same thing, enter into an agreement, an effective date, and that it goes into full course of the earliest moment possible. I'm going to start with you, Rick. Do you have any comments of things that just leave out of, no, you don't want it in there, yes, you do, or more?
No, I think the only thing I wanted to, in, in the dollar amount figures there, those reflected a budget that the advisory committee was working on. We need to do it probably back to the budget that I had last presented to council, which was about quite a hundred thousand dollars. And I think we just need to state the city will, you know, spend in first-year operations in that number of a hundred thousand dollars, or something like that. That way, you know what the budget is when you're doing this, it's in the agreement. And I would state, we say that as an operating and capital cost, so that if we are successful And I would state, we say that as an operating and capital cost, so that if we are successful in going after a grant, say from the Division of Watercraft to repair the boat ramp areas or such, there wouldn't be any question. I, I don't think they're going to come back and audit us, you know, reality, but I think they want to see that the city is making some financial commitment to it. And they don't really care if that's coming from the university fees we charge or whatever. It's just that they want money spent in the park.
So where that would be is the second wheress from the bottom on the, the O D N R agreement. So the third line down, ending with the fund, and then just say to add to, or what I would prefer is that it say, in addition, the city will provide a hundred thousand dollars for the operating budget, because this implies that we're going to use their forty-nine five in the first year and we don't want to.
No, I probably would really not say one-time operational assistance, but to assist the city in operations and capital projects for the park.
Okay.
And not say reference the year, et cetera, but it just says, we're not going to go spend this on something other than the park. And that was, that's, that's really what their intent is. They said that we don't, they don't, are going to mandate is to suspend it on one thing or another at the park, but that it should be, has to be spent on the park.
Sounds fun.
I have a question about the Aha University match. I wasn't, I know we only talked about it two weeks ago, but I'm just wondering where the university stands on that, or if they are leaning towards.
You didn't go to lunch with this.
I was, election day, I was working.
Yes, I know that, but the university has given that, or has agreed to give the additional twenty-five thousand dollars match. And so that is helpful. My personal feeling is that that twenty-five thousand should go in the endowment or the trust, whatever we're calling it, rather than in the.
It's for three years?
Yes. So if we put that in, in that endowment each year for three years, that's seventy-five thousand dollars in that endowment fund and.
Are the other funds coming, the ones from the separate colleges are going to go into the endowment?
Into operation, no, into operation.
Oh, okay.
But yes, we did get the, that was one of the things that has happened since our last meeting. And I have arranged for a field trip, I heard from most of you, not all, that the date, unless somebody requests that we try a different date, is Tuesday, the twenty-third of May at five-thirty, and we will leave by city vehicle here, city bus from this location.
Twenty-second.
No, we're not going to ride our bikes. Tuesday, the twenty-third. So those are the, the two things that have really changed. There's been some conversations back and forth with O D N R.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. One is, I'm just curious why, what's the reasoning behind not wanting to use the forty-nine five the first year? I mean, just curious.
So that we begin to build an endowment.
Okay, so that's part of the endowment.
For perpetuity.
Okay, okay. And then in, under section four, the city has the right to terminate this agreement?
Right.
For any reason, but not limited to. The second bullet point, failure to manage the property in an acceptable manner.
I mean. It's pretty vague, I know.
Well, well, it's vague, and acceptable to whom? I mean, I was just wondering, it's my understanding that for any reason, we could give it back.
It would be a council decision, basically.
Well, I was just wondering if it could be, you know, maybe not phrased in such a negative manner, like we're going to fail to do it, or, you know, terminate this agreement after one year, you know, for any reason, you know, other priorities, et cetera, you know, but not limited to, and maybe just say the, the other two things. I, I just think that one leaves things open, just saying acceptable to.
Failure word issues.
I know, failure, failure, failure. Yeah, but, but that one especially, it's such a nebulous thing, like acceptable to whom? So I, I was just wondering what the reasoning was behind that.
But.
And so maybe just to, you know, maybe cross that out and say for any reason.
Well, I mean, it did originally just say for any reason.
Right.
There seemed to be some sentiment on council concluding some.
Well, that's why I wondered, you know, why, where this specific language, you know, what the reasoning was behind it, that's all. And I could be curious to leave it in.
I'm fine with it not being in there, but I, I felt that that was things that council wanted in there.
Oh, well, I don't know.
Anyone on anything relating this?
I'm going to echo those same sentiments as far as what is acceptable manner, but I think that, yeah, under what circumstances would the city need to turn it over, get rid of it? I mean, I think established, the funding obviously would be a reason as to why.
Right.
How about just failure for the, of the city to manage the property?
In an acceptable manner.
But, but isn't, but isn't that like our decision? I mean, we'd say, yep, we failed, we want to give it away.
Yeah.
Your citizens would say, I mean.
I mean, we don't have to have any of those.
Well, I, I think the failure to, to establish the funding support is a useful thing to have.
And maybe that covers, Nancy said, it kind of covers the same thing.
And, and failure of O D N R to provide adequate support, that doesn't bother me. Or, you know, if it, or for any, you know, or for other reasons. I'll take that one out. How do other people feel?
I have a few things. First, you referred again to the forty-nine five going into an endowment, but last time we talked about this, you talked about the Athens Foundation running the endowment, and any city funds can't be controlled by the Athens Foundation. So do we need to create a fund that is a city fund?
That's, that's something the mayor is working on.
Okay, because it refers, in ordinance one, you mentioned a fund, but I don't know that it explicitly creates a fund. So I think if the ordinance is authorizing the city to accept the money, if we want it to be in a separate fund, we probably need to create that fund so that it's, you know, in that earmarked accounting process.
Why? Where, where are you saying, oh, I, because it says one-time operational assistance fund?
In section two, you said authorized accept forty-nine thousand five hundred from O D N R, and you say as a one-time operational assistance fund.
I just took that directly from their agreement language.
Right, but we should, I guess, if it's going to be in its own fund, we should create a fund for it?
But I, I thought that we had kind of agreed that wouldn't be in the initial ordinances that we have two other things to deal with down the road, and that's one of them.
Well, that we, we shouldn't authorize accepting the money till we have the place to put it. I, I'm just asking the mayor kind of how we need to handle this, I guess.
Well, I think that, I've been trying not to do a whole lot of concurrent, you know, ordinances if this passes, because if it doesn't pass, obviously we don't need any of those ordinances. But if, there really needs to be probably two funds under recreation set up. We've got a two-seventy to two-seventy-one right now for the community center and overall recreation. We do a two-seventy-three for the operating expenses of Stroud's and a two-seventy-four for the reserve, for capital and, you know, just a reserve account for the operational expenses of Stroud's, which then council has to authorize anything coming out of that. Obviously, nothing's automatic. Our concept originally was that we would try to take out of those funds under the Doug Franklin Bank, you know, school of thought, I guess, was, yeah, we put it originally, put the O D N R funds into that, but we should budget and plan on probably a five percent or something maintenance cost every year, that we would automatically put more money into that. And then his concept was if you were successful that year, anything over a certain amount, you'd want to have some degree of reserve within your operating cost budget, because you can have a bad revenue year for some reason or another at almost any time, weather related or whatever. But if it was over this reserve, let's say you establish a ten percent of operating cost reserve, it automatically go into the other fund that becomes the, what we talk about as the endowment, because there's really two endowments. One is one that's created with city funds, and that's a reserve that the city would maintain through its own financing mechanisms and probably spend out of for matching of capital type claims. The other is, once this is done, if we set up a friends for the Stroud's Run Fund under, as a restricted designated fund under the Athens Foundation, that's where the donations that would come from the public or fundraising events that might, might occur would go into. And so that way, everybody knows that it's in a discretionary fund managed by the Athens Foundation that we, in essence, as a city, leave alone. Other than it gets big enough, we start drawing five percent from it for operating costs to, to offset things.
So could these funds go into a reserve fund?
I would put it in the city's reserve.
Right, in the city's reserve fund?
And I think what could happen is that.
Could be moved?
Right, I mean, the, the question of it is, since everybody's going to be looking at this draft agreement, I wouldn't want to spell it out in the agreement. I would just say, we, you know, we need a separate order, because O D N R accepts and sign that we aren't going to do any of this until November or so. We've got plenty of time to set up these different things and an organ say, one receipt of this receipt for this, we direct the auditor, put it such and such place, all of those things. But if we really want this as a model, and the state wants to use it as a model, and that was our goal, then a lot of the real Pacific things or the financing or whatever, we don't really want to put there. Because it's going to get copied all over the place, maybe.
I have two other things. One is, in all the budgets that you've presented to us and that the task force has presented to us, the money from the OU departments and the match from OU was listed as being operating revenue in the current year that it's received. This is the first time I've heard about that being put into the endowment.
Well, that was just my suggestion, that if we could afford to do that, it might be nice.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of my concerns is people have expressed to me a concern about whether we can afford to do this, and the, the contributions from the university, I think, go a long way toward dealing with those concerns and covering the costs.
Well, I think one of the other things that was Carol had suggested, and I know a number of council members have talked, you can take something like the Tourism and Economic Development Fund, which gets the bed tax money. We've committed thirty-five percent of that to the tourism bureau, and that was thirty-five percent up to fifty-five thousand dollars, I think, to the chamber. Well, that leaves a balance, obviously, and that's been spending off a certain amount of money, has a current balance of about a hundred thousand dollars. We could fund that through that and not touch income tax money at all these first years. In fact, maybe ever, if you want to use that other source of, of revenue. Athens Enhancement was also one that was suggested, we get roughly forty-four, forty-five thousand dollars a year to, for a rental payment to Trembley for it, and I think there's a land use, at least, and we have to pay the property tax, what the property tax would have been to the school board. That's the only real expense, other than every so often, council has dipped into that for a special project of lighting or, or other things. So there's a couple of options to looking at the general fund, because some of the fear or concern by, by people has been, oh, well, this will be another drain on the general fund. We could spell out and say, this thing will be paid for through, you know, revenues from one of those specific funds, if that's what council's wishes are. I mean, a future council to change that somewhere down the road or expand upon it, but it automatically puts a limit or a cap on it, and then maybe tourism and economic development is a good one, because this is, we should have a good recreational facility for our, for what we're doing for tourism and economic development here. And it's paid for by the bed tax. And if we grow ourselves hotels, there's more, more there, and we can still consider other things to do with it.
We're not deciding that now, are we? We're going to spend tours a lot. In fact, I'd like to see this attached, so future councils know what we were talking about when we took this step. And that would be that we're talking about two positions that are partial or funded out of the rec department being shifted over and a whole bunch of part-time activity. We're not talking about an expanded one until we have the funds to cover it, is my opinion of what I've heard up till now. And so we have the funds right now with the collections to cover this, so why even talk about using additional funds? That just adds fuel to the fire of everyone else's opinion that we're taking a step when we're not taking care of our core mission, which is something I think I've said before. You know, I would rather spend the money from the bed tax for another police officer than for this, quite honestly.
However, I, I am not sure that my definition of the core mission matches your definition of the core mission.
We could certainly agree to disagree. I think public health and safety has always been the fundamental.
And public welfare.
Yeah. And, you know, obviously, I have one vote, so I, but I do think that we do need to have something like this, because we're not talking about a very grand operation. We're talking about a, going from what would be a regional state park to a city park run in large measure by part-time people. I've heard that we're going to be reducing the number of campsites. And so our, I mean, I think that there are some changes that are, are quite evident in this, and so if we could attach this, so people would know in the future what we're talking about.
Why not in there, Nancy, where we talk about receipt of this forty-nine five and the operating budget, didn't say instead of operating and have developed a five-year operating budget, see attachment A? And just put it there.
All I want is, all I want is that in two years or three years, I mean, because we can look at the Evelyn Lux Fund, which until we went and worked it out, it was all of a sudden going to disappear. And I, I just think that this is pretty self-evident of bare bones budget, and that's what we're promising. I mean, I think that to promise more than that is really a fall.
Be putting it in that particular paragraph as, as an appendix to this or attachment to it?
Yeah, I only, I also want to know what the liability insurance cost will be for this. You, you did land some buildings, and I never quite got the numbers on that one.
We just called a local, local agent for it and asked, I think it was like twenty-five hundred dollars or something.
You said lands and buildings, but I didn't hear liability.
Oh, it's liability.
Are you sure liability's included in that?
I can get, I'll.
I'd, I'd like that affirmed, because it's a, it's a lot more land and it's that lake business and.
That did come out of the task force, that was one of the things that they pursued to find out a cost for that.
Well, I mean, I'm in for them, for the administration, because I don't know if they don't.
No, I'll just, right, I'll get them a letter in question, if we add this twenty-six hundred, they ask what's the total cost for insurance of the buildings and property and include liability?
There's not, yeah. It didn't, you know, it seemed like a modest amount, and so I want to make sure, since we've both seen liability up and down.
Um, we also need to decide where to put the mineral rights in the wheress or in the number eight?
I'd put it in number eight.
Number eight.
Because that's, they shall, wheress is getting ignored a little bit. They shall, yeah.
Did you have a thought on that?
Yep.
On the dam, I wondered if there's a specific standard, like with a specific date that we're referring to there? Because if that's something that changes from time to time and it just says the standard, then I, they've had previous standards that may not be as difficult to meet, and I, I have a concern to make sure that they're the ones structurally maintaining the dam.
Right.
So I'd like to be really clear about which standard we're saying it, it needs to be up to.
It will change in the future to become more strict, is what they were saying to us. So that's kind of the way it works. It, it does change periodically, but that's the way the, the repairs work, is that they are up to whatever the current standard is at that point, and the standards keep getting tougher, and that's why they say the chances of them ever getting around to us are slim to none.
So maybe until such time as the dam is brought into compliance with current, you know, state's Division of Water Dam Regulatory Program or?
Okay.
Would you say add the time of repair in parentheses or something, see what the law director thinks of it? Because you want the standards at the time the repair is actually occurring, so you're not meeting something that's nebulous. If they lower him a lot, we're in trouble.
Yeah.
So that's in there twice. Hey, anything?
Well, Jink and I were wondering about four, if it means year one, year two, year three, and any time thereafter, right? There's not a one-year decision point, and after that, there's no backing up?
That's a good question. I asked the same question. And.
What's the answer, Nancy?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's have the answer.
Yeah, what's the answer?
Because after one year, we sure as heck aren't going to know anything, and some of us will not be, you're probably. of us will not be, you're probably.
Well, I guess I've always used number five as the catch-all, that if the city ever doesn't, the only place we can transfer it to is the state of Ohio.
Right. And they have said that as well.
But, but that means any year, like two and a half years from now, we could do it.
That if we want to get rid of it, the only place we can get rid of it, yeah, to is...
Well, maybe it should say that after one year and any time after thereafter.
I don't want either of us the option. Uh-uh. Right, then the state could take it back anytime.
The city has the right to terminate this agreement after one year.
I think for us, we'll do a lot of investment, and then the state grab it.
Look at...
I'm looking at four.
Four is the question, that's two, three, four.
Well, four, they actually gave it a four in the code.
Section four, no, section four in ordinance one, says the city has the right to terminate this agreement after one year for any reason. So maybe it should say after one year and any time thereafter.
I thought that was number one in the ordinance one. Oh, no, this, we're looking towards not this agreement. Okay, sorry.
Well, what the mayor's saying is, uh, covered, covers that, is the fact that we cannot transfer the property to anyone except the state.
I know, but it doesn't have the timing. I, I'm just saying that if I'm reading the ordinance, this ordinance, and I just have this document, it isn't clear.
How easy do you want it to be to cancel the lease?
What?
How easy do you want it to be for a future council to cancel, cancel your act?
Well, I'm just saying that they're going to ask this question. I, I'm not, I don't think it's, I'm changing the intent. I'm just saying that it isn't clear what this means. It means, because, in other words, do we want to have to say, either we cancel it in one year, or we pretty much never cancel it?
That would be the ideal, but that may not be the reality, because if there's no three or five million dollar endowment coming around, then, you know, maybe it'll be a, a question of what you're going to, how you're going to spend your money for some future council, and maybe none of us will be, or something.
If you look at the...
Oh, I'll love you all.
If you look at the...
No question about that.
If you look at the, the Department of Natural Resources Agreement, page two, in there, therefore, first of all, wherefore, therefore, number one, says in the first year, either the city or the state can revoke the license for no reason. But then you come down to number five, and it says the city agrees, it shall not transfer, lease, or assign to anyone other than the state in perpetuum. So that takes care of every year.
Okay, then, in that case, why not just put it in section four of our ordinance and just say after one year or any time thereafter? I mean, I'm just saying...
Because that gives the state the right to cancel it any time thereafter.
Well, if I'm reading section four correctly, it says the city has the right to terminate the agreement. It doesn't say the city or the state. Our section four says the city has the right. It doesn't say the state.
Because it's our ordinance.
It's our ordinance, right.
So we don't say mention the state.
So we're saying we have the right as a city to terminate this after one year, I gather that means, but not before, and any time thereafter, after one year or any time thereafter. I'm just suggesting that, that this language be clarified to reflect what we're, what the decision is.
How do you say after one year then? How do you say after one year?
Because I think we can't terminate it in six months, can we? Don't we have to have it for a year?
Well, then the other clause kicks in and says we can only give it back to them.
But I just think our ordinance, so other people are not sitting here two years from now saying, well, wait a second, it says after one year, does that mean...
Well, how about I ask the law director about that part, too?
Who will ask him?
Me.
Okay. Yeah, but if we say after one year or thereafter, I guess I'm really surprised this is an issue, if, if this is what we believe.
Could you make reference to what Jim mentioned in the ODNR, just in parentheses, so that it's clear? And then you wouldn't have to say thereafter?
Swaying with in parentheses.
Whatever, what did you read, Jim?
Number five.
Number five, the agreement two.
And the city, but we could just add that, and the city agrees that it shall not transfer, lease, or in any way assign the property to anybody but the state. Just add that.
Yeah, but I think future councils have to know that if it gets to be a huge burden, then they have a right to get rid of it.
Right, okay. Well, just add that.
And give it back to the state.
Well, yeah, we can't give it to anyone but the state.
Right, right. Yeah, see, I think those are completely different things, though. Number five says you can't sell it or get rid of it to anyone but the state. That's one thought. Section four is a totally different thought, and it says the city has the right to terminate the agreement after one year and any time thereafter.
I don't agree that they're...
Totally different. I think they work very nicely.
It seems like we're locked in with one year, doesn't it?
Yes, it seems like, well, what is, what is the problem with sticking in and...
To me, I mean, we have an agreement with whereas that both the state and the city are agreeing to. Only thing we want in whereas, or actual sections here, are, this is the enabling steps that we have to take. One, we're authorized to enter into the attached agreement for the operation and maintenance of Dow Lake, or, yeah, that's right, Dow, just only the one. We're already agreeing on the dam thing in the agreement. We don't need it there, it's just superfluous. The acceptance of the money is just, you know, if we want to designate it for a particular fund to receive it in, that would be the place to do it, when the transfer should occur is, is appropriate. I mean, only if we want to add something else to what's in the base agreement should it be in our own whereas, because we're, we're also agreed, everything in the agreement. So why repeat it?
Take out number four?
Unless you want something different than what's in the basic agreement, there's something only the city can trigger, that's, that's there. But I think we got it all covered under the basic agreement.
I do want to see section four maintained in there, mostly because I thought we had a discussion about the last clause, federal establishment funding to support the park. We were at one point talking about a benchmark in terms of how much of endowment we expect to see in one year. I also wonder that, we're talking about this being operational assistance for the forty-nine thousand, I don't think it can go to the endowment, it has to go into operating assistance, doesn't it?
I think it's...
They said we could use it any, any place.
If you set up the funds the way I'm talking, Paul, is to, any balance over certain would roll into the other at the end of the year, and that tense purposes can all be a rule. It's just how we do the wording in the future. But if they want, we're going to send the, the agreement back up to them. That's the, the issue why we wanted to hash it out tonight, was so we can get with Gary tomorrow, he can take, get it up to the state. We could work for a reading, so with a draft agreement, because they have, their legal people haven't gotten back, and that's done before, I mean, because the legal people are working, as long as they don't change the intent, and there's not nothing, you know, major, I mean, that's fine. But if they come back with something that's really different, we'll, we'll have to amend and go back to first reading.
Question, are they going to, okay, we have this one-year window. We skipped the one-year window, we don't see what we're, the damage to the park that we're doing, we're not doing a good job, for whatever reason, we decided to keep going with it. Three years down the line, the park's a mess, and we want to give it back to them. They say, yes, but it's going to cost you to give it back to us. Is there any type of release in terms of that? I mean, I see the one-year part, but I don't see the, the, the number five section, if there's any type of problem with that. And I don't know what, you know, I'm just trying to anticipate what we're going to be doing with this. You know, I don't see, you know, maintaining it in a supplemental manner.
It's kind of like foreclosure, county forecloses on somebody's property.
Oh, so it'll be at that point with the state?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all in there.
Good, Jink.
That's my interpretation, but we, we may want to ask the law director that, because what if they say, what if they put more, well, if they have it in this agreement, and it says, and they agree to it, well, didn't say anything about dollars here. So that should rule in my mind, but attorney might answer that differently, I don't know. We could ask. Because we could ask, we could say, we could have, add no cost to the city, you know?
I'm just, I'm just wondering why the window and then why, you know, okay, go with you.
Okay, I, I guess I want to understand this one more time. But the window is, we cannot give it back if we wanted to before one year. Is that correct?
Right.
So we're committed for a year. Then after that year, that was Paul said, you know, whatever happens, you know, all the city buildings fall down or something, and we're desperate for money, and we, you know, is it possible two and a half years from now, four years from now, to, to say to ODNR, unfortunately, we, we, we can't maintain this, and we're going to give it back to you? Can we give it back after one year is over? Well, wait, I want to hear them. That is, that is my question.
Well, and...
Does anybody know the answer?
I would rather have you, the, the attorney, answer that question, because you're really asking me for interpretation of a legal agreement.
Okay, so, all right, well, and I guess, I guess that's my point.
I know what I interpreted that, but you really want your attorney answering that question?
Okay, then what I would like to see is the answer to that question, and if it is, there is a window beyond twelve months from takeover, that we say one year and any time thereafter. Because it sounds to me like we haven't, we're not answering the question that I have. So if we need to ask an attorney, let's do it, and then make it clear in this particular section four, is my request.
And come back to us then, at that point, if it's different from?
Um, no, I, I mean, it seems to me that we can, I can let you know what the response is. So if there are any changes in the ordinance or ordinances before Monday, that I can let you know before Monday.
But everybody on this side has expressed a, a serious question here, and I think that if it isn't the way it's been stated, that we can give it back, then I think we need to know it before, and then revise perhaps our request to ODNR.
Well, I will address all of that with Gary, who's anticipating our response tomorrow, so he's ready to, to work on the details.
I think it's just a matter of being clear. I'm, I'm not pro or con, I just want to understand what we're saying, so we're not sitting here, you know, eight months from now, trying to figure it out, that we go in with it clear.
Or we're sitting, told they have to put a hundred thousand here because blah, 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 blah.
Okay.
We need to know now.
The audience, yes.
Phil Cantino, Thirty-Four Cable Lane. I have three points or questions on this. First of all, there are two documents here. One is a proposed city ordinance, and the other is an agreement with the state.
Right.
Do they have the same force of law? And my question is really, if a future city council wanted to change some plank in one or the other, is it equally easy to change?
Well, the ordinance refers to the agreement, so they're equal.
So if something is only in the ordinance but not in the agreement with the state, is it just as difficult for a future city council to change as if it were in the agreement with the state? Maybe we, maybe we need the law director. Because I think it's fairly important, I was very glad to see these protections in here for the forest, and all the various things that the African Conservancy proposed, but we had the idea that these would go into the transfer agreement. And, you know, I think of some, you know, economic emergency that some future city council faces, and they decide they, maybe they should cut part of the forest there, whether, whether the city council could simply pass ordinance of repealing that portion of the original ordinance.
That's a good question.
Interesting.
Good question.
So...
Well, but as I said before, I mean, unless, yeah, statutory city has to follow the laws established by the state of Ohio, and if that says, a camp future council can reverse the action of another, which it pretty well does, the only way you can do, change that is you have to have a charter city, and then the vote of the people is the only way you can change the charter, because that's what you put in it. Otherwise, you're dealing with, state legislatures will establish what our rules are, and if our rule, the rules they establish at any time allow council to do that, yep, they can do it. Nothing in the agreement or in the text or the language is going to change that.
But if there's an item that's in the transfer agreement with the state, then wouldn't it come down to, you know, if the city tried to allow commercial lumbering, let's say, that it would, the land would revert to the state, as opposed to the city being able to do that?
You're talking about that section five again, where you can't lease out something in the agreement, is that what you're talking about?
Well, that actually is in the, let's, let's look at that one minute.
But whether this takes precedence over the city ordinance is right, is that what you're saying? That this agreement...
Oh, the, the ODNR partnership agreement. These one and the whereas is in their agreement as well, right?
But that this partnership agreement is a stronger legal document, because that's a question than our ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I think it is.
So what you're suggesting is that these whereas languages be included in the agreement as well.
That's right, exactly. There are four of them, I think.
I, yeah, see, I went by the law directors, what he's already sent us, in terms of where he thought the appropriate place for the different things were, and that's exactly why I put them where they are, from his memo today, where he said he thought each thing went.
I would still be interested in his response to that specific question about what a future city council could do relative to each of these two ordinances.
And Phil, what would a future law director say about it, too? So, I mean, you know, you don't, there are no guarantees in this world.
No, but I think to understand which one is stronger legally is a good question.
On the opinion of this law director, not the one in five years. I mean, you know, who knows?
My point really is, like, the state has a constitution, there's only a way to change it. A city without a charter, in essence, is a democracy of the state legislature and their bills. That's the way it is. Same thing could happen to federal, there's a constitution, and the legislature can make any rules and change any rules they want, as long as it doesn't violate the constitution. And if they want to change the constitution, there's a process for that.
So we can change...
So there's hardly any guarantees.
But I guess, so we can change anything?
We may have to.
You can, I mean, now, if you've agreed with something in a document with another party, then usually you have to have agreement from the other party, but it's still possible to change it.
Okay, but that's a very good point.
Because if the state comes in and says, oh, we're going to temper all the state forests, and, you know, with, the city of Athens, well, why can't we do that, too? We go back, well, you've got it in your laws, why can't you allow us to it? Then you renegotiate, I mean, the same thing can happen. I mean, it's, it's the differences of the steps and tucks and balances that are there.
Okay, well, let me move on.
The most powerful thing you have is your vote, whether you're elected or elected.
The, the second point is, I think it would be good to add to this, the ordinance, the city ordinance, that there'd be an advisory committee set up. I know you don't want to...
That will be a separate ordinance, that we're not dealing with at this time. We've already discussed that, and we will do that by future ordinance.
You don't think a reference to that should be...
No, agree to accept it now, and then establish some of those things.
The third point is, I'm, as John now has pointed out to me just now, I think our wording may have been a little overly strict on the plants, the removal of plants, in that this would outlaw some picking berries in the park.
Well, I did think of that, picking a flower for their mom.
I think either we want to say whole plants or roots.
Okay.
In other words, something that kills the plant, or alternatively, we could put in a parentheses, exception, accepting berries, nuts, and leaves, such as, if I have, is not adversely affected, something, something to that effect.
Right.
What'd you say?
Right.
And, I was...
And mushrooms.
How did you know I had mushrooms?
Well, I didn't put that, the mushroom language in here, I, I just kind of shortened it.
Anyway, that's, that's all of the comments I have, but I still very much support this.
Anyone else? If not, I'll work with the mayor and the law director, and we'll see what we can bring through. Thank you. I have no miscellaneous.
Okay, Environment Committee. I thought I'd have some stuff from miscellaneous, but I do not, so if anybody else does, going, going, gone, environment is gone here.
Excellent committee.
Well structured.
Stand up.
Hey, I have some personnel committee. I had a message from the auditor that... I had a message from the auditor that April reports are not complete yet. April financials are not complete yet. They're still waiting, I understand, for submission of some numbers. Auditor Hett anticipates having those by the end of this week. Hopefully, we'll have them in time to approve them at Monday's meeting. We'll see when they come in. My miscellaneous was going to be the discussion of the fees for late rental permits. We don't have that. Mayor, did you have anything to add to finance? This time I-
I already did it under City Services.
Right, it went to City Services. So I think we're good.
Education, Paul, let's see if you can follow.
Hey, that's my committee.
You're in the last term there, man.
One whole term off. After nine o'clock, I'm bringing it.
Well, okay, Transportation Committee. Both of my items, sidewalks and street closings, could probably go on and be discussed for a while, but it seems as though some of the older members are wearing thin, so. Well, uh-
Well, I can hardly wait for my next opportunity to get too many assignments.
So we'll start, I'm going to start with the street closings because I think that'll go a little bit quicker. As far as any, or the upcoming street closings, there is one for the Boogie on the Brits, of which I've been contacted by Rick Wasserman. I think, was last year the first year that they did this? Again, the Brits, okay. And the request to date is July 22nd. And I believe the times are going to stay the same, 7:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And that is the portion of Court Street from Washington to State Street that will be closing down the street. So if there are any questions or comments or problems with that, we'll put it up for first reading next week.
I think it was seven to 11:30.
Seven to 11, is that seven to 11:30?
Right now.
A little more time? And then something else I wanted to discuss in committee about street closings is, as of recent, in my experience with the Transportation Committee, is that there have been some various street closing requests, some of which may be noted as private or personal. So I wanted to, as a council, determine maybe some sort of precedent, if there isn't one already established, as to how we handle private versus public street closings and what we do and do not grant. Just to bring it up, I know that I talked with the, I sent some emails back and forth today to some of the committee members and other department heads as to how we handle these. Just to bring up an example there, the Citizens Bank was wanting to close down a portion of Campbell Street for a grand opening. And in the letter that was submitted that I received, it says, we're requesting to close down the street. They had planned to have some tables, a variety of craft projects for children who will be attending the event and prizes and such. And I know that we said that we were not going to close the street. Another example was that there was a student who contacted me who wanted to have a portion of Court Street or one of the parallel streets closed down for a film shoot. So I guess at what point do we determine if they're private or public? And at what point do we grant street closings? You know, if they're annual events, we just say yes. Or if they're community-based, we say yes. I guess I'm just wondering where we start and end with the street closings. And if the mayor has anything to say to precedent or what, how you've handled various street closings.
Well, I think the one thing that we do on the street closures is we don't consider, for you, whether it's a public or a private event, that it really is an emergency of the city. So we always look into this saying, this is a legislative act and it's not in effect until 30 days after. Now, we understand that that can't always happen. If you have an air conditioning unit go bad on the roof of your building and you have to bring it a crane and close down or partially close down a street for a period of time, those are emergency-type situations and we administratively comply. Back on Baker Center, as I recall, council did an ordinance that did it for a protracted time period with, subject to administrative review. Both of these, you know, recent requests were ones that unless you met three days in a row, you weren't going to make the deadline for the one. And it brought up the issue in talking discussions with the law director is, we usually require, if we list the normal street closings as public events in our liability policy, how do we then say to our insurer, oh, we're also going to do this for these? And is it going to be, you know, et cetera? So the law director suggested that maybe you'd want whoever was closing the street to ensure from a liability standpoint. It just really got to be a little bit convoluted. Are our purposes for, in essence, I've never seen council close a street that I can recall, you know, for a private party or a private business. I have seen some happen for neighborhood associations, et cetera, that wanted to have a festival like on Maplewood Street or, you know, some of the other things. But it brings up an interesting question in trying to discuss this with Amy and the law director. And it's sort of, you know, it's kind of a gray area. We don't have any policy. And it's really not the administration's policy to set up. We just deal with emergencies when we close the street. It's really up to council to set up. If they want to have a policy on street closings, the only complaint that I usually get from citizens and merchants is if you do it too much in front of their business and they lose business, they get upset.
As far as I know, there's no real policy that I've seen. The trend that I usually see is it's public use. And then the next question comes to whether it's helpful for the general commerce, I think. So I don't know what kind of policy we want to put together. I mean, you-
I mean, if a policy at all, I just, I mean, when these things come across, the street closings, like who do we say yes to, who do we say no to? So I just wanted to determine some sort of, maybe informal, say no to everybody. So just some sort of policy so that, you know, when these are brought up, that we have something that we're basing our decision on, not just, oh, well, it's a low-traffic street, we'll close it down, or it's, you know, community-based, we'll close it down, you know, what, you know, at what point do we determine whether or not we're going to close the street down or not? And I just would like to be more clear on that, I guess.
But Oak Street and other streets, we just say no? So why would we say yes on Campbell Street if we said no to the students on Oak Street?
Sure. But we said no to Campbell Street.
But I think some guidelines would be useful. I agree with you.
I looked into this a little bit because people were asking about, I think it was more like block parties at one point. And some cities have a policy where if a certain percentage of the residents sign a thing saying, you know, they agree that they want to do this, that there can be like an administrative process that people can apply for a street closing. So, you know, if you wanted to work on a policy, you might just look at what some other cities do. What kind of, you know, do they require some kind of deposit, some kind of coordination? But I do think at some point, there gets to be a limit because it is an inconvenience for people, especially when a major thoroughfare that people use to get through town gets closed down. People have to make adjustments and deal with the things that happen when the streets are closed. So at some point, if more and more and more events come to us, that's a good idea to think about having some kind of policy.
One of the other aspects we're discussing here is also, it does cost to close a street down. We have to put the barricades up across. I forget what Andy Stone told me a couple of years ago on what it costs just to get the guys up there with the barricades. It was a fixed rate, a minimal rate, but at the same time, this is what I would weigh each time. Is it, is it cost effective that way? The movie thing you're talking about, you know, I'm aware that some cities have a program to, because they want, you know, product placement, I guess, is the term for a city, to do. But on the other hand, I know we've had things that have been nixed because of traffic congestion, everything like that. So I don't know, I, the idea of having a percentage of that block going for it, that would mean Palmer would be a default if it given. So I don't know if that's really the way to go. I think that might apply to other cities, but I'm not sure it would apply to here.
Good point. I was going to say, I suppose time of day. I mean, you know, if it's a high-traffic time, if somebody wanted to shoot a movie at, you know, midnight. I mean, you know, I mean, I think those are considerations.
However, we're in a college town with a school of theater. If we started closing streets for film production, we'd never have opened streets.
Well, maybe it has to be for commercial-
Well, and that request, I believe, judging by the email address, wasn't even an OU student, it was a Wright State student.
Was it Hollywood?
Wasn't Hollywood.
But look at some of the others we have cruising. I mean, is that, that's not really an organization per se, especially with cars.
Right, and that's what I'm wondering, I mean, as far as the discretion.
That's a special interest.
Maybe like a checklist of considerations that we go through before we consider closing down the street. Something, you know, determining how much it's going to cost, time of day, flow of traffic.
Well, could you guys maybe, you know, draw up some of that? And maybe look at some other city and then bring it back? I think it would be useful.
I mean, yeah, certainly.
Okay.
I know, I'll do searches, why don't we all three do searches on the committee and see what we find? The other thing is the process for closing streets. I know some of the bigger events, you have to talk to the fire and police, right? They're using the loop with most street closings or no? I mean, even the small-
They're involved with all of them from an administrative standpoint because we do have to maintain a fire lane on Court Street. Because Court Street's the most common one that's closed. And we always have the setup so that we can get a fire truck in there and proceed down it, most of the rest of them. Although I know Sunday, we were accused of having the longest cul-de-sac in the world if you didn't make the turn in front of the city building in Washington and proceeded on College Street toward the green. Only way you could do was make a left and go down University Terrace. And you'd look for Court Street by going down Park Place, find out that's blocked at the Baker Center. Look back around, then you have to make a right or a left. And you could get to Court Street by going to South Green Drive into Brixton Avenue. It was a long detour on Mother's Week.
Yeah, Mark.
So we had some people confused.
You can't get out of hell.
Yeah. We had some people confused, so, yeah, but you're right that there's things that-
Okay, I guess the reason why we made some-
We don't always get everything exactly right. That one, we probably should have used the opposite side of duty, but for that particular day, we didn't.
So really, generating a policy, that's one aspect too, is what the administration has to deal with.
Right.
You know, in terms of safety and logistics. But again, in terms of, you know, the break for me is always whether it's a private concern versus a public. And then after that, how it impacts the city in general.
But these two specific requests were easily answered by saying that there's not enough time to respond. Because if the mayor points out, city council takes the action to close the street and we do it through our, through our process, which is three readings, so that's-
Right, but we also declare emergency or suspend.
For help, public safety and all that. None of these are help with public safety. So we can't do that. So it's going to take that time and then another 30 days after the mayor signs it.
Well, yeah, it was easy to say, know that both these requests. But I mean, if additional requests come up, that's the only thing that I'm preparing for.
They need to give us that required lead file too.
Oh, yeah.
Which is sometimes difficult for organizations to do.
Absolutely, well, just as it's typical for the city to close the street down. So then we'll work on formulating this, you know, considerations. And then maybe else as a council can, you know, each time this comes up, we can agree what we'll consider before shutting down a street. Great. Anything else about that? Oh, yeah, actually, there is one more thing. Question for you, mayor, on the street closing for the King Midget Carr Jamboree. Still talking with the lady from the Visitors Bureau. My question, I guess, is how and when or what do we know about High Street?
We know the project will be, bids will be open May 11th.
Right.
And then once we have the award, we'll select a contractor. We want them to start, we'll find out if they can probably the second full week of August, June, because we'll probably wait till after a high university's graduation before we do it. Now, they will maintain a lane of traffic. We would have to look at, once we see their schedule, knowing when this event is proposed to be, can they be done? Because they really need it between Congress and Washington Street, right?
Judging by the one back in 99, it says, close a vehicle of traffic High Street in the city of Athens from Union to Washington Street. From 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And their proposed date is August 3rd. So I guess, I mean-
We can, you know, if council wants us to, we can specify that, that that section has to be-
Right, and then we talked about having that veto.
Acceptable for traffic. I mean, we're going to maintain at least a lane of traffic at all times on High Street. That's the plan. But for their event with spectators and everything else, I hesitate if you've got one lane torn up, yep, you can get up there on one lane, but where are you going to put the people that want to watch the event? You know, what risk do you put them? So that's my concern.
Right, so unless that part of the construction or part of the project is completed by said date, then they can't have access to High Street?
Well, I would be worried about it.
Right.
Because it depends upon how much is torn up in that area and then what liability. Because we're obviously allowing people to assemble and sanctioning an event for them to, encouraging them to come and see. And then if the sidewalk, say, repairs in that area is not done and they're open pits and somebody hurts themselves, I mean, that's not good. I don't know if we'd win or lose any suit about it if we did, but I think we would feel obligated to do, you know, to help some expenses here. So I don't want to put people in an unsafe position since it is an August 3rd date, means we have to pass it by July. If we're opening the bids May 11th, we ought to have the information to you by the end of the month.
Okay.
And that would give you probably adequate time to do it.
Thank you. Any thinking on that? Next on, or first on the agenda was sidewalks. And I might turn it over to Paul, as I'm told you're the sidewalk expert by our fellow Transportation Committee member, Carol. But what has come up as of recent, in respect more or less to the Stewart Street sidewalks or lack thereof, is a way in which council can determine which areas within the city are in need of sidewalks. I know that there was discussion about resolution of necessity. There was a resolution of necessity passed back in 88 where they declared some areas as problematic and therefore assessing the property owners for those sidewalks. So I guess I just wanted to, and I talked to Gary Hunter, or I corresponded with him via email today on what exactly, you know, council has done in the past or what council can do as far as sidewalk repairs. And he said that, you know, it was his understanding that the city wants to consider doing sidewalks when doing a street project and assessing the property owner of the cost. He said if this is to be done, it would be his impression that we'd need to repay the cost, or sorry, to develop the project as an assessment project and utilize bond counsel because the property owner does have the right to pay it over a period of years and not right away. So I guess in council's experience with sidewalks, what we want to do or how we would go about resolutions of necessity. So I just want to open up for discussion. And Paul, if you want to talk more to the logistics of the resolutions of necessity or how?
The way I understand it is that we should be referring to 729 of the Higher Vice Code, which requires us to do a resolution of necessity. That's 72902, which is what's referenced in that. I think it was in the ordinance at the R988 that you were looking at. I gave you a copy of it.
Yeah, I've got a copy of it.
Part of the thing in there that requires is that we should have, we have to approve plan specifications and estimate of cost. So that's one of the first things we really have to get in line or in train to do for Stewart Street if we're going to do that. One of the discussions I had, whether this was required for High Street too or the middle school area, I think that got into another discussion. Part of, the other part of it is that we have to create a notice of it. part of it is that we have to create a notice of it, um, it's twenty-three oh-three, notice construction repair sidewalks and gutters, and they have to be basically, um, given notice the landowners, the budding property owners, um, for the sidewalks and gutters to be done. This is, uh, again, hasn't been done in a long time. Um, if we wanna get the, um, sidewalks done, we, uh, should get some kind of specs on, and, online for that. Um, essentially, usually the street would do that, department would do that, or if you look at the code right now, as we have, I think it falls under the Service Safety Director to actually generate the specs, specifications. So, we should get, um, I, I thought they had some kind of generic specs, I was trying to look at the subdivision code for that, but it really just talks about grade and access and stuff. Um, I don't know if we have anything in particular for Stewart at this time.
There are some particulars within the subdivision, I believe, regulations, I've seen some of those. Well, one of my questions that I tried to get with Gary and wasn't successful today was, does, do sidewalks have to be on city's right-of-way, or if the right-of-way is too narrow, do you then, and you're mandating a sidewalk, do you then have to purchase the right-of-way from the, or add to your right-of-way from the property owner, or eminent domain it? Because when I look at Stewart Street, according to the county's GIS maps, sections of it are twenty feet right-of-way, other sections are twenty-eight feet right-of-way, and the other looks like a, maybe a thirty, but it's not labeled. But at best, we might have a thirty-foot right-of-way on, on Stewart Street. And if that thing is exactly centered in twenty-two to twenty-four feet wide, and a twenty-eight to thirty feet right-of-way, you aren't gonna be able to put a five-foot sidewalk on each side. And I know that from talking to code enforcement about when we require it as each one of those that has been remodeled, put in the sidewalk as the endpoint, because you don't want all the heavy trucks going across and crumbling, like, uh, the one residence near Cost there, the intersection, um, we're, we're right at the property line for those sidewalks. You know, I mean, they, they can't be any wider unless you narrow the street. So you're, you're gonna have, that's the question I wanted to ask him, was does all sidewalks and curb and gutter and street have to be in the right-of-way? If that's true, then depending upon which plan, you may have to purchase additional right-of-way from the property owner.
Okay, so-
Assuming the county's GIS site's correct.
Which is?
Sometimes I see it off.
I know the students that have done it.
I, I've looked at portions of it I know are not correct. Um, I don't know which, which covers to your truth.
Well, one of the things we do, and what we did at, at High Street, High Street's a little different, because there's a section in the code twenty-one, or nine twelve twenty, that says, "Existing sidewalks, we can mandate that they be repaired." And the city engineer basically went through it and said, "These are bad," and so we, we, we designed it that way, but we did have survey work done to make sure everything we're doing is within our right-of-way, and we know all of the elevations and everything else. And, you know, when you start looking at that, that the, the plan just for, because they talk about the grade elevations in the code.
Yeah, that's in the nine twelve-
Establishment of grade and specifications, and we got into some of that over on Lancaster Street. Um, it's not inexpensive to do the engineering for.
We have some of the sidewalk there, we don't have all of it. In terms of specifications, do we just continue it? Is it required that much design if we're just gonna, say, bridge the gap between House A to House C, or D, or something?
Well, we have to determine if it's in the right-of-way or not. I mean, the one that's there on the one side, they put in, they weren't mandated to, if they use their own property, that's fine. But that's the section that the county says is only twenty feet wide, right-of-way. But none of those sidewalks are on the city right-of-way then, because it's, that road's at least twenty foot wide at that point. But if the property owner voluntarily does it, I mean, that's fine. But the next section is a twenty-foot, twenty-eight-foot right-of-way until you get to Cost Street, between Playground and Cost. And the other one just looks from the plat mix, that it looks about probably two feet wider. But it's all, all the widerness is on the side with the sidewalks, not on the side that doesn't have any sidewalks, according to, and you're really gonna, you know, we could send, probably send one of our in-house people down there that doesn't have a surveyor's license, but we, you know, can get a pretty good idea, but to really, when you design it, to get that far, it's, it's gonna have to have an actual surveyor do it.
We could narrow the sidewalk too, we did on, um, the one in front of, um, in these, in the in Paxton's place, remember we put in that sidewalk and stick it there four feet? I mean, so we could go down to four feet. I would say, if we're gonna do that sidewalk, we'd wanna go, leave the trees there and go around them, as we did by the library and Lincoln Street. And so I'm, I'm writing a note to Debbie, asking her to see if she can find the plat for the Stewart Street subdivision, and see if there's anything on the deeds that would tell us what the right-of-way is.
Sure.
Thanks. How wide is that sidewalk on the other side?
I don't know.
Do you know? I just buried.
But from a handicap, essentially, from what we did at Court Street, you're supposed to be a minimum of forty-two inches in width, from a, from a corridor's type standpoint. And at no point on the sidewalk, because of parking meters or poles, can you be less than thirty-six inches wide. That's what the ADA requirements specify to us. Now, we prefer in high-traffic areas, like on East State Street, some of those are five and six feet wide. Uh, just, we had the right-of-way, we were able to do it that way. Um, and in high-traffic areas, yeah, we'd rather have at least a five-foot wide sidewalk.
Stewart Street being a high-traffic area. I wonder if we're good to have a sidewalk? Well, yeah, any sidewalk on that opposite side of the very narrow sidewalk would be.
Okay, so I'll, I'll check and see if I can find class, I thought I had one of those printed out.
Debbie has ones like the subdivision in the courthouse.
Okay.
She'll come through for us. So, um, and also in my correspondence with the law director, he was going to look into it further, um, and refresh, so he'll be getting back to us on more research on the issue, and I'll let council know as that comes in. But I just wanted to get some discussion going and find out what the city can and cannot do in terms of sidewalks. Um, any other questions, comments, concerns, any miscellaneous?
Just an announcement, um, the consultant for transportation, for the bus transportation was here last Thursday morning, and the next step will be, we will be reviewing, uh, the proposed routes with, um, our own transportation, the Athens Transit, uh, people, and the OU Transit people, um, and then beginning the, the process of a hearing for those routes.
Let me say too, um, and comment on the May fourth, that was great. I mean, and that was my first experience with sort of getting the overall comprehensive idea of what is going to be become of this plan, and, I mean, it was wonderful. I think almost every question I could've possibly imagined was answered, so I've been doing-
We had about thirty-five people here.
Yeah, I think the task force has been doing a great job so far that I can, I can tell, so. Other miscellaneous? All right. Transportation as a journey.
All right.
Okay, um, I'd like to convene the Planning and Development Committee, um, the agenda item that we have tonight is, we have a recommendation from the Planning Commission about, um, the zoning designation for University Estates, and Lance Rec is here, um, with us. I've got the map, and I don't know if maybe we should put it on the table down here, so everybody can look at it, or on the table up here, and either, either place, Lance could come and talk to us about what's on the map, but I feel like people need to be able to actually look at this.
Maybe on the table sounds like, you know, stretch.
So everybody stand up, stretch your legs.
Say, did you notice that the recommendation has typo in it?
Bring your recommendation.
With typo.
Was that from the precedent of the Planning Commission?
So the, the Planning Commission met on Thursday and approved this, this map, and has a recommendation, it's my understanding that part of the project is platted, and in that part of the project, these zoning designations would apply to the existing described, um, lot lines, and part of the project that's being annexed hasn't been platted yet, but is generally described, and is, each area is described in writing, and when it comes time to plat that part of it, the Planning Commission would sign off on the, the zoning lining up with those plat lines. So, do you wanna describe generally people, Lance?
Uh, I, I think you said, but this is part of the step on annexation, is why we're going through this process. And, uh, we made several changes, uh, I don't know if I need to go through them all, but a good example is this area here, because it was directly associated with the clubhouse and everything, we thought that it should be all the same zone, you know, when you read the code sometimes, you get thinking, you understand it. And then when we went to Planning Commission, and Steve Pearson helped us walk through it, several of these areas, like this one and this one, were changed back to R three from a B one. Uh, all these golf villas down here, or part of them, or most of them are gonna be part of this clubhouse rental pool, okay? So, that, in my mind thought, I had to zone it B one, because it's a semi-business. But then they're saying that, uh, that rentals are allowed in R three, so that it was better for us to do that way. So if, if any particular one of these, say we've got to this point here back here, and we wanted to sell these, instead of put them in a rental pool, you know, as an R three, you can easily go back to an R one and sell them as individual units. Uh, so it allowed us to do those kind of things.
How much of it is platted now?
It's platted up to right here.
That's phase one.
Phase one. Which is this, and the individual streets, and these twelve block, neutral blocks in front.
Um, one question that I had when I first looked at it, is that in the areas that aren't platted yet, there, there are conceptual outlines of where the lot lines will be, or where you expect them to be when you bring it through as a subdivision to get that platted. But some of these, there aren't lines, and we probably need to figure out where's the line between the R three and the open space, so that we have, um, something, even if it's gonna go through that plating process later, just to kind of a guideline of what, what the concept is, um, because there's a pretty significant difference in what you can do in those zones.
Actually, what, what it doesn't show you is that there's almost three hundred foot difference between this and this. Uh, so, when this happens, we have to determine where this line's gonna be. And there's two things, why I can't, why I think I can't put it in there right now, is, is part of our sanitary system will drop down below and come through here, uh, versus running in the deep part of the road as above, because right down here is a connection point, where we go to, uh, help move the street from the city.
Courier.
Courier Street. So, uh, that's the kinda reason why I can't put those boundaries in there, but they definitely- I was trying to answer her question on why they're in the property line back there. We have to determine where, yeah.
So you should rough something out about where the zone is, even if it's not the property line, knowing that when it gets platted, you'll have that information.
There's other examples of that too, though, over here, here's R three, here's open space, there's domination between those. I guess would be the next one. Are these individual cabins, is that what it's called?
Individual units.
Okay. Now, those gonna be owned, so each one will be a lot, or?
Um, that's, that was the question, as explained, they'll be, they could be in fractional enters, uh, timeshare.
Okay.
These could end up being individuals.
So, what I'm hoping, as far as timeline, you know, we have to be done with this completely by July seventeenth. I'd really like our third reading to be the first Monday in July, so I wanna start reading it the, um, first Monday in June. Um, so I think we can ask a lot of questions, we can talk about this another time in committee, and then start reading it. So, Lance is here with us, do you have questions?
First meeting in July, when is it July fourth, is that Monday?
It's the first.
Tuesday.
Monday is the first. At the minimum, you better have borders.
Okay.
I mean, it's, so just get her to draw the borders and make them agree, because you can't have an open space, it's just a little circle around it, it's got to have-
We have to, or some shady color shading or something, roughly where those are.
No, I mean, it could change a bit. Well, then it'll be really easy to draw that line.
She's got the color map there.
Ask them to change the B one zones.
Okay, they did. Here's the map that was brought to the Planning Commission.
It's signed off.
So here's the, the one with the color shading.
This is a color one, it kinda shows you more where they're at, but I guess what you're asking is, at some point, we have to establish a boundary line behind it.
We want the open space here.
Yeah, we absolutely need to.
And those, and that's all defined in the, uh, deeds restrictions and covenants for the, for everything that goes on here. You know, and, you know, the fifty-foot walkways that we've, we're trying to leave, so no matter where you buy piece of property here, you can walk the entire green space area. But that definitely will have a defined boundary.
Those are changes.
Those were, uh, and we had minor changes on the, uh, original plan that we, uh, went before Planning Commission, and I just have to take the dots off, yeah.
I tilted a little bit that way, so the characters can see.
Lance, my, my, uh, the, uh, the D trans, uh, we're, I pointed, you know, it's, was this, because it's a D trans part, you bring us up today, oh, what's happened there?
Yeah, that's, uh, it was just a change into, uh, one of Dr. Connor's, uh-
Separate companies.
Separate companies, yeah.
So these, uh, these are phase two, there's still some B ones in there though, I see this one here, this one here, is that?
Those are R.
Those are R?
No, these are B.
Just this one?
Okay.
Okay.
Those are phase two, though.
This area here is, we're still envisioning some kind of a community square type thing, where we can have little shops and, and little retail things, because this is kinda the center of the project, so it becomes a, a very easy walking situation. And in order to have, you know, business on the, mixed in there, we're just, that's the one B in one area, and it's close to the clubhouse, and-
I'm curious, are these, I mean, it's a lot of houses, but I'm gonna, are you imagining my people will move from out of town to, like, I mean, people who moved to Athens to run into this culture, or are you imagining that people currently in Athens are gonna move?
I think it'll be a, it's a mixture of everything. We've done a lot of research that says that there's a very strong interest in the alumni, coming back on a part-time basis, thus some of the condos, and that's why I think you'll see, um- And the fractional interest thing is, is very popular right now. And that's some of the reason that, uh, you know, we've left this a little, you know, some R three and some R ones. Gotta wait and see how it sells out, you know?
Oh, pull the mic.
One pile of R ones in there.
That's actually a lot, Jim, and it comes right here, it starts off with, uh, which hour?
That's a lot.
Twenty acres. And actually, there's, you know, so deceiving, there's one building spot, and it's right there.
Okay, so similar situation here, similar situation here.
Electric, everything else. But somebody will want that privacy, and-
The other thing we need to do is, we're required in this process to have a public hearing, and I would like to schedule that for June- hearing, and I would like to schedule that for June twelfth, because one of our committee meeting nights, and to ask Debbie Walker to go ahead and start advertising that, because it has to be advertised for thirty days before we hold the hearing.
How does, if you have that June twelfth, does that still give you enough time between that and June third?
We can start reading it before those things can be happening along the same time period.
But we need borders.
So we can try to sketch something in around that and get her in to sign off on that. Okay, have Joe and go over that with us.
Because, well, what would happen, these are going to be built, okay, so if they're going to sell them, they could ask to make it wider, perhaps, but...
My engineers come last, I think all you have to do is block it off. Something like you've done right there.
Okay, so you don't even need, and then she can look at it, and then we can go from there, okay?
And I guess, all of these are going to just kind of...
I think I have to look at everything, make sure that there's no more open spaces that are, and with no boundaries, I guess.
Yeah, we got the green coloration versus there.
This is for your protection if you want to sell them, because that open space might be a liability in the backyard.
Yeah, because it's, it's not so much a liability, but there's restrictions in that.
That's what I meant. That's what I meant by liability, if you are buying or selling, that's why you want to border it. Requirements, I'm seeing the property owners here.
Is that something else, if I just get another sheet of this and bring it to Debbie, I guess, and let her sign off, I don't know that that needs to go back through the Planning Commission, does it?
We'll have to check with them, right?
As far as I know, do you change, do we have to do some majority, or we...
Well, she's signed on this, but, you know, I think that you just go back...
Well, is this in keeping with what they intended with their recommendation? I don't think it's a substantive change, and I think we could check with Gary, but he's told us that on some other issues. So, you know, they were looking at the color map, and when, and, you know, talking this all through when they voted, and I think to clarify where that boundary is, is not going to be a substantive change from their recommendation.
But we're not going to have them put the side boundaries in until they decide to sell, decide here.
We just want to get where the zone is.
Just moving over to zone.
The concept in the zone.
Yeah, there's...
I think it's just...
Lance, is there a drawing range?
Yeah, we've got it all laid out.
Any other questions or information we can...
Once we have borders, we're fine.
Actually, that's the maintenance and the buildings like that.
We'll get those borders clarified and bring it back to one more committee meetings before we start reading, okay?
So it's two weeks from now.
Can we find out that stuff about Stewart Street?
No, we don't have to sign it, but we'll...
I know, but I amended it, so I'm going to have to substitute it. Because I was concerned about, I just restored B.
Right, so you don't worry about schools, that you're saying?
Yeah. This is A. Yeah, and B is restored, isn't it?
Does anyone have miscellaneous items for Planning and Development?
Yes, many. I said yes, many items. You were right, I was wrong. An hour's worth of items.
She just wants to torture people.
I do.
Okay, well, if no one really has miscellaneous items, then we're adjourned.
All right.
Okay.
Could this be in there?